...regular council meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, Monday, October 27, 2014. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and eternal.
Madam Clerk.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Shabbett.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Rodrick.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gerlach has emailed me, he'll be here shortly, got tied up in traffic.
Should we wait?
I'm not sure if we want to wait.
Just wait till he gets.
Yeah, we're going to go just a little bit out of order. We're going to make sure the full council is here, so I'm going to wait for Mr. Gerlach. So at this time, we will go to the consent agenda, and then we will go back to the town council, sitting as a charter monitoring and complaint review board. Consent agenda: Approval of regular council meeting meetings, September 22, 2014, no executive session. Approval of regular council meeting minutes of October 14, 2014. Approval of executive session minutes, October 14, 2014. Approval of special council meeting with Budget Committee minutes, February 25, 2014. Counselor DiMederos and Counselor Gerlach abstain, absent. Approval of special meeting minutes, February 1, 2014. Counselor Ruda abstains, absent. Receipt to the following minutes, following boards and commissions: Art Council, Board of Canvassers, Fogland Beach Oversight Committee, Conservation Committee. Correspondence received and filed: City of Newport, Town Council Resolution, in support of Question Five, Bonds for Creative and Cultural Economy. United States Department of Education, recognizing Fort Barton School, exemplary high-performing National Blue Ribbon School for 2014. Resident Joe Ward, Neighborhood Concerns in William Barton. Barbara Pelletier, confirmation of a $50,400 grant for Petsmart charities to conduct a targeted free-roaming cat spay-neuter project in Tiverton. Tax Assessor, approval of abatements. Chief Blakey, proposed traffic ordinance, Section 78, through traffic on Julie Hill Road, public hearing rescheduled for November 10, 2014, for advertising. Approval of petition by Verizon New England and Arrogance Electric for one joint pole, P dot 11 dash 1, on the southerly side of Hurst Lane, for service to new condominiums. Response from Mr. Balucci, DPW Director, and a copy of town stipulations required for approval. Treasurer Denise Sarot, distribution of September revenue and budget reports. Any items to be removed?
Yes, Mr. President, CA 3C.
Any others? Okay, I will entertain a motion regarding the rest of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Ruda.
Sure you've read that 3A, CA 3C, deals with the conditions at William Barton Development, I believe? I have not personally been down there to see it myself.
I have.
You have? Now, in this letter, written by Mr. Joe Ward, it talked about the developer getting a lot of the surety money back, well over $300,000, it seems, reported by himself. Do we have any story on what's going on with that, or why that was?
Is Mr. Balucci here?
No. Oh, yes.
William Barton is still under the planning board. It's a subdivision that hasn't been complete. The developer seems to be walking away from the project, and the planning board is going through the process of securing the surety. I guess legally, there's time restraints in which you have to notify the person, and so they're actively seeking, I believe, not only the amount that the planning board is holding right now, which is about $130,000, they're looking at ways of seeking more funds, if needed, to complete the project from the developer. So I think there's a couple of legal implications that the Assistant Town Solicitor is looking at. Right now, you've heard about the sinkhole. My hands are tied to the DPW, because I cannot go and do any work in a subdivision that's under construction. It isn't really huge, it's about a foot deep, and probably about four foot square. We've got it surrounded by cones and painted with orange paint. If push comes to shove, I'll be fixing it before the winter, because there's an issue with cover over the water line, because it's directly around a water gate, and now, instead of four feet of cover, we have like three feet of cover. So I've been in correspondence with the Stonebridge Water District, and the superintendent, that's his concern, so we will fix it. Hopefully, the planning board will take care of the issue beforehand, but I think we're going to be stuck with plowing it, if the developer's not going to do it. So rest assured that the roads will be taken care of, one way or another.
Well, my question was more towards, the developer was returned roughly $340,000 from the surety, so how did that happen, if the project wasn't done? You mentioned there's a time constraint on the $130 that's left?
I think there's $130,000 left in surety, yeah. Some has been returned, the road had been built up to binder course, but we went through a long period where it's been down for 10 years, so it's deficient, and I'm requiring another leveling course to be put down before the top, and I think that's where we're running into problems. The binder course is usually good for three years, and the top should go down after that, but we were stuck in the recession, no properties were moving, the developer was stuck, money issues, and this is the third project in a row we've fallen into this sequence. And I think it's the last. I haven't seen any out there that have come to that level, where we've been stuck for a long period of time, with not being able to complete the project. It was just the last of several stuck in that situation.
I'm not sure if it answered, how did he get the $343 back?
Well, I think that's contractual, and I think it's usually dependent on the percentage that's been completed, and the last portion is always held until completion. So I think that's why they get the $300 right away, because they were 80% or 90% complete, so they get that, and then whatever the last percentage is, that's what's held.
Rosemary was going to say something for the planning board. Yeah.
I was just wondering.
Good evening. My name is Rosemary Eber. I am a member of the planning board, and past chairman of the board. In the past, the planning board, and I did not vote for the release of this one, let me clarify that, because I've been burned too many times, but it's always been at the recommendation of the Highway Superintendent, that if they agree with the release of the bond, then the planning board usually, you know, goes with it. And I don't know who's watch this was under, but that's how it happens. And there have been some deficient calls.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Ruda?
No, that was all.
Then I will entertain a motion.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor? Motion carries. As we continue to wait for Mr. Gerlach, I will go to the open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. Mrs. Pelletier.
Barbara Pellet here. As you know, I'm working on this farm recognition, and I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't get it done this month totally, so we're going to have to go into November, and I spoke to Nancy Mallow earlier today, and probably we'll have something at the second meeting in November, because the first one is the swearing-in of the new town council and all of that. It's very difficult to really get an accurate list, because some people are not on the town lists for tax abatements for farms, and neither are they on the official Department of Agriculture in Rhode Island, so it's a hearsay type of thing, and I have been checking out every single liable person on the thought that maybe they don't want to be listed, or maybe, you know, for whatever reason, I think we should get there okay. And one of the things that I've found as a feedback, and that's something that we ought to think about, is there are some who are actually reluctant, because they think there's a punitive trickle-down of either taxes, or some sort of whoever what from above that might not be, might be to their punitive kind of existence. So I think we should kind of think about why people think of the community in that way sometimes, but, you know, that's for another story. I have found that we have a huge variety, that we're known for horses. I didn't realize that Tiverton was really such a horse town, and it's wonderful. And also, I have found that there are, some of the products are very competitive with the open market of any supermarket in town, so I think we should really, really make an effort to buy local and have pride in what they're doing. And if you do know of any person anything, there are signup lists right there, and I'll try to keep current, and that's just about all. If I can help in anything else, please let me know.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pelletier.
You're welcome.
Now that Mr. Gerlach has arrived, we will go back to the first item on our agenda, with the town council sitting as a Charter Monitoring and Complaint Review Board. Tiverton Home Room Charter Complaint filed by James S. Odell, under Section 1211, against Municipal Court Judge James A. Donnelly Jr. Mr. Matthew Olivera is our attorney in this matter, representing the council, and at this point, I would ask him to begin.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council, now sitting as a Charter Complaint Review Board. As you know, you are sitting in that capacity as the review board, and Mr. Tights, because the complaint is against Judge Donnelly, Mr. Tights is representing Judge Donnelly, and that created conflict, obviously, so I'm here to advise the council. So what I'd like to do is maybe just give a little, sort of the backdrop of why we're here. As you know, any citizen can file a complaint under the Charter, Section 1211 of the Charter, if they think that any official has violated any provisions of the Charter. Mr. Odell has indeed filed a complaint pursuant to that section. The town clerk has found that, at least with respect to the allegations, it is sufficient, and therefore, it comes before you as the review board. That enables you to hear evidence from both the complainant and the respondent. We'll start with the complainant. The complainant can present whatever evidence he wishes to present in front of his body. Mr. Tights, on behalf of Judge Donnelly, will have an opportunity to respond to that. And then, this body deliberates in public as to whether or not there's sufficient evidence to find that there is, in fact, a violation, which then would go to, normally, the municipal court, to determine whether or not there's a penalty that should be issued. In this case, because the complaint is against the municipal court judge, it would be heard by the probate court. But in order to get to that level of appeal, this body, by two-thirds vote, has to find that Mr. Odell has met his burden, and at least four members have to vote in the affirmative after you deliberate. So having said that, let me just give you sort of the synopsis of Mr. Odell's complaint, and then we'll let him present his evidence. He submitted a complaint asserting that, against Judge Donnelly, that he should have recused himself, in effect, from hearing another charter complaint involving an appointed position, which was heard before the municipal court on August 25, 2014. The reason it was heard before the municipal court is because the complaint was issued against certain members of the council, and therefore, it goes to the municipal court. The judge heard the matter on August 25, rendered a written decision denying the complaint, and Mr. Odell, on September 24, filed this complaint asserting that Judge Donnelly shouldn't have heard the matter in the first instance, because he was either a party to or interested in that proceeding, and that's what's before you this evening. So without further ado, Mr. Odell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir.
And if you present any documents, we'll have Ms. Mallow mark them as exhibits.
Yes, sir.
So we can make the record.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is going to be very brief. This will be very brief. I'm not going to-
I'm going to just swear you in, if you don't mind, Mr. Odell. You solemnly swear that you have to give, in this proceeding, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
James S. Odell, 130 Warren Avenue, Tiverton, Rhode Island.
Okay, thank you, you may proceed.
Okay, Mr. Odell, will you try the other mic?
I don't think that mic works anymore.
Is that better?
That's better. Thank you. As I said, this is going to be very brief. My attorney is not able to be present, but I did get some guidance from him and from an outside source. I'm not going to argue all the merits of the case this evening. All I'm going to do this evening is present some documents that support my case for the record on appeal. The documents I'm getting ready to hand out first are Rhode Island General Law 3614-2, definitions, the definition of what it means to represent another person. I have it marked as A, but you can have it marked any way you like.
No, we can keep it as A, if you've already premarked it, that's why. Complaint's Exhibit A. Do you want to give a copy for A?
Oh, I apologize. One of those is for Mr. Tights. On page two of this document being handed out, it has two definitions. The first states, "A person represents him or herself before a state or municipal agency, if he or she participates in the presentation of evidence or arguments before that agency." The second states, "A person represents another person before a state or municipal agency, if he or she is authorized by that other person to act, and does in fact act, as the other person's attorney at law, or his or her attorney in fact, in the presentation of evidence or arguments before that agency, for the purpose of influencing the judgment of the agency in favor of the other person."
Any objections? There's no objection to the introduction?
I have no objection to the introduction of the exhibit, no.
A is full.
Second, this is marked as B. Rhode Island General Law 3614-5, prohibited activities.
Can we just pass it over here?
He gave you one, correct? Yes. And I have no objection to this being in exhibit B.
B is full.
If you look at handout B, it states, prohibited activities at two. Represent any other person before any state or municipal agency of which he or she is a member, or by which he or she is employed. Based on these two documents alone, I like to state for the record that either all seven councilors need to recuse, or that Mr. Tights should not be sitting before you representing the judge. Mr. Tights serves at the pleasure of the council, therefore, it's a prohibited activity under 3614-5 to represent any other person.
Ms. Chair, do you want me to press the hour, or wait till? Why don't you wait, Mr. Tights? Why don't you wait? Make sure we have all the documents first.
To further strengthen my position, at this time, I offer into evidence two advisory opinions. One from 1995, saying that a solicitor cannot represent a client before the council, and an advisory opinion from 1998, that states, "A solicitor cannot advise a council on an issue for another of his clients." These are marked C.
Thank you.
At the last council meeting, Mr. Tights did advise the council as to how to handle this hearing. As the council's lawyer, Mr. Tights said, "The council should dismiss the complaint." Further, sitting as your lawyer, Mr. Tights advised the council to have the hearing, in which, in my opinion, has got an unethical advantage, and for which he's already argued to dismiss while serving you. I have copies of the rough transcript when Mr. Tights made these three statements, if you would like them.
Rough transcripts from Nancy.
These transcripts are rough, and they're only Mr. Tights's responses to the questions that you put to him, when you asked questions at the end of what you heard at the last meeting.
And who prepared them?
Yeah, who prepared them?
I did.
So it's unofficial portion of the transcript, Mr. Odell?
If I had more time, I could have had it professionally transcribed, based on the video.
And you want this marked as D?
That could be marked as D. I didn't know if the council was going to receive them, so I didn't identify them.
I object to C and D. Do you want to hear my reasons now, or are you going to follow them?
Why don't we hear your reasons, Mr. Odell?
First of all, with respect to Exhibit C, I object to it on the grounds of the relevancy. The fact of the matter is, this issue has already been, first of all, this is all issues of the Ethics Commission, and if, in fact, I did violate these laws, or I'm violating them, the remedy is a complaint to the Ethics Commission, which interestingly enough, was already done. Mr. Justin Katz, apparently, within the last year, filed a complaint with the Ethics Commission against me, due to my representation of the town clerk in the similar setting, when it was an ethics complaint by Donna Cook against her. He filed a complaint with the Ethics Commission, which the Ethics Commission found to be unworthy of proceeding at all. There was no finding of cause, nothing. In fact, I didn't even know about it till I read a letter, and the, or people asked me about a letter to the editor in the newspaper, and I had to call the Ethics Commission, and they said, "No, when we find it unfounded." So the Ethics Commission has already dealt with this issue, and said, "It's not a client. I am not representing Mr. Donnelly in a personal thing. He's not paying me as a lawyer, I'm representing him here in the official town capacity." If I'm not, if I'm wrong, as I said, it's the Ethics Commission should be there, but it still has no bearing at all about the underlying complaint which Mr. Odell has brought, so consequently, I would object to C and D.
I, in reviewing this manner, I want to focus on the complaint itself. If you look at Mr. Odell's complaint, really the last paragraph that's at issue here, again, referring back to the hearing before Judge Donnelly on August 25, he states that, "Since the majority of the town council was cited in the charter violation," I believe he, meaning Judge Donnelly, is an interested party to the fact that the judge's income, as a municipal court judge, is due to his appointment by the town council, and that a majority of the town council was not only naming the charter complaint, but the same council members voted for his appointment. In essence, what Mr. Odell is saying is that Judge Donnelly shouldn't have heard that charter complaint in the first instance, it should have been heard by the probate judge, and that, I feel that that was a violation of the charter. Now we're hearing a new allegation, I think for the first time, that Mr. Tights shouldn't be representing the judge in his official capacity as judge of the municipal court, and I think we should stick to the issue. That may be, as Mr. Tights correctly points out, perhaps a matter for the Ethics Commission, but I don't feel, as counsel to the review board, it's really relevant. I think what we need to focus on is whether or not Mr. Odell is correct, as a matter of fact, and all, that Judge Donnelly should not have heard that August 25, 2014 complaint, or should that have been heard by the probate court judge instead?
I'm sorry.
So that's really the issue.
I'd just like to correct for the record. Everyone keeps saying the 25th. This hearing was on Tuesday, the 26th.
26th, thank you, Mr. Odell, okay. The 26th, August 26th. So whether or not you admit this, it's what weight you give to it, I don't, I agree with Mr. Tights, that, I don't know how relevant C is to your deliberations here tonight, it's up to you and your discretion as to whether you want to admit it. D, I think, just on the fact that it's not an official transcript, it could just represent Mr. Odell's recollection of what transpired, but again, I don't know if that's really relevant to the proceedings here. So it's up to you, Mr. President, as to whether or not you want to admit these and give it whatever weight you deem appropriate. I don't think they're necessarily relevant to your deliberations, but it's up to your discretion.
Again, I will only give my own opinion.
Should I finish what I'm saying first?
No, he's rolling on evidence.
Oh, okay, all right, go ahead.
As far as Exhibit C and D are concerned, the horse has already left the barn. We've already seen it. What weight each counselor will give to them is up to them. Again, I agree with Ms. Olivera and Mr. Tights, but we already have it, so each counselor can make that decision based on whether or not they want to give this any credence.
So the objection's overruled, and it comes in as a full exhibit, and given whatever weight you deem appropriate. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, C and D are full.
Thank you. Again, in summary, if this complaint, in my, this is just my opinion, in summary, if the complaint were heard by Judge DeDario, which in my opinion would have been the proper solution to this, I would have been fine with whatever his decision was, but because of how this has been handled, and by the council and by the solicitor, I'm prepared to take it wherever it needs to go. And I do also have an ARPA request for a video copy of this meeting, so that I can get it transcribed, as soon as it's available. It needs to be a true copy of the full proceeding. And just as a sidebar, and this is something totally of my opinion, if this is to be avoided in the future, the easiest way to avoid it would be to change it in the charter and make the municipal court position an elected position. Then there would be no room for impropriety, or implied impropriety, or suspected impropriety. Thank you.
Mr. Odell, could you just, for the review boards, would you agree that whenever a charter complaint, at least under the charter as it stands now, that any charter complaint that is filed against a council member would be heard by the municipal court judge in its ordinary course? Would you agree with that?
By the way the charter is written now, if it's an individual member, I would believe so, yes.
Okay. Can you just touch on why you feel that, because the complaint suggests that Judge Donnelly was an interested party in the proceeding, thereby, he should have been disqualified from hearing it? Can you explain to this body why you believe he was an interested party?
As my complaint stated, "When you serve at somebody's pleasure as an appointed employee, it is in your interest not to offend or to go against their decision." They also control income, they also have the ability to either reappoint or to not reappoint.
Any questions from review boards?
Mr. Odell, why didn't you find there was a problem before Judge Donnelly heard it? Why didn't?
I'm sorry?
Why did you wait until after he heard it, to say that he shouldn't have heard it?
Why did I wait until after the fact? Why did I wait until after the fact?
Yeah.
Quite honestly, because that was one area of the charter that I was not very familiar with, and it was almost two weeks after the hearing before I found it.
Okay.
I had missed one.
Mr. Odell, in the complaint, and I'm not referring to the language of the charter at this point, in the complaint, your objection to the judge sitting was that he is quote-unquote, and you put it in quotation marks, that he is an interested party. In the charter itself, it doesn't refer to an interested party. It says, and I'm quoting, "Whenever the municipal judge is a..." And it's a twofold situation. He's either a party or he's interested in any proceeding. What is your definition of a party?
My definition of a party is anyone that takes part in a proceeding. My definition of someone who's interested is anyone that has an interest in a proceeding.
Now, which of the provisions are you... Are you saying that the judge was a party to the proceeding?
Both.
And you're saying he is interested in the proceeding?
Absolutely.
Okay. So by your definition, a party would include the judge?
Yes, it would.
No further questions?
I just want some clarification. I mean, the charter is explicit as to how the proceedings follow, and it does say that it does go to the municipal court judge. So in essence, you're disagreeing with the charter. Okay, just let me continue. So would that same rationale follow regarding all boards and commissions, since everybody on every board and commission is appointed by the council? So that any determinations made by them could be subject as they being interested parties?
Other boards and commissions are not paid employees. Further, I state again, if the judge was an elected position, it would remove the possibility of impropriety. And I would further add that in the charter, it says it goes to the court, not to the judge. And the probate judge is part of the municipal court, if I'm not mistaken. He is the backup and/or substitute replacement of the same court, if I am not mistaken.
So, but as you said, it's backup or replacement.
That's right.
And again, I am not an attorney, but I believe that the framers of our charter were explicit in how these proceedings were to go. And the, again, I'm only speaking for myself, that the recourse is a charter amendment, which you would need a charter review commission before that could take place. I just think that it's just a little far-reaching, as you have already stated that, you said if it was anybody else but Judge Donnelly, that you would abide by their rule.
No, sir, I didn't say that. What I said was, if it was heard by the probate judge, which in my opinion would have been the proper solution. That's what I said. This should have went directly to the probate judge, in my opinion. And I'll state again, for the record, that in my opinion, a charter change does need to happen, and it needs to be in the charter that the municipal court judge be an elected position. And I will say this for a reason. I do not know of any case charter complaint where a majority of the council has ever been named. I don't recall one, if there is one, which is why I believe the charter has never been compromised or put in this position before. Now, I've only lived in Tiverton 30 years, but I don't ever remember a complaint being filed against a majority of the council, which was the original complaint that Mr. Donnelly heard. Anyone present can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't ever remember one being against a majority of the council.
I think that it's been against the council, quote-unquote, not as individuals, but against the council.
The seven of them?
Was it against all seven?
Yeah, I believe, we'd have to look. I'm not sure it was all seven, but...
I don't know if it was against all seven. I remember a couple of counselors.
Yeah.
Correct, but I never remember being a majority, never.
I have just a couple of quick questions. Jimmy said earlier that if it were... Matt asked for clarification. If it were a single member of the council where the judge was hearing a charter complaint, you found that to be an appropriate mechanism that the charter provides for a hearing on such a matter?
Agreed, because a certain single counselor does not have the power to appoint or to not appoint, but a majority does.
Sure. Barring any unforeseen circumstance, the traditional way we do that is on a revolving basis, so it's done in mid-year or midterm appointments. So it's not done this year, it'll be done one year after the next council comes in. So I think that is designed partly to eliminate some of that worry that the municipal court judge is sort of beholden to any one particular body. The body is revolving constantly and would be subject to at least some amount of scrutiny in the midterms. So I guess the question I'm trying to understand is if... Is it your opinion that the municipal court judge is in... Not necessarily Judge Donnelly, but as the municipal court position, the judge position serves today in the charter, and it's how it's created, is it your opinion that that person or that entity would be incapable of an unbiased opinion on a matter that involved any amount of influence or potential influence in future?
That would be my contention. And I would also point out that in the history of the town council, multiple members serve for multiple, multiple consecutive terms.
I would agree with that. Okay. That's all I've got right now.
Anyone else?
Mr. Gerlach? Mr. Odell, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of kind of what the optimal end game is here. Is it your intention to have this move to the next level, as Mr. Olivera had described? Or should we try to skate to what seems to be a potential systemic solution, which is a potential charter amendment that could, based on your opinion, kind of resolve this kind of conflict of interests when the majority of the council is on the stand, if you will?
I've said this before. I said this when I filed the complaint. I'll say it again tonight. I would not only be satisfied and appeased, but I would also feel a conclusion to these complaints would be when the probate judge heard them. I would prefer that it be heard in town, but if not, and it has to go to the state courts, I have been assured that we have standing. I would prefer to settle it in the town court before the probate judge and live with his decision and put it behind us. But if that's not going to happen, it'll go wherever it has to go.
I have one follow-up question to that. I'm kind of reading the tea leaves a little bit in between what you've just... In between the white spaces, what you've just said. So is it your opinion that if we rendered a decision tonight that upheld, or we found no merit, or whatever the decision is, that we did not determine as a body that Judge Donnelly violated the charter, that that would not be satisfactory and you would petition further?
Absolutely.
Okay. And do you agree that this town council has little to no authority to compel the judge of probate to hear a case?
The judge of probate is asked to serve when this comes up in 805B.
By whom?
Whenever the municipal court judge is a party or interested in any proceeding about to be heard, or in the absence or unable to perform the duties of the municipal court judge, there is a vacancy in the office, those duties shall be temporarily performed by the judge of probate. So I would guess the charter gives the authority.
So, right. That's what I'm saying. I would just restate that the council has little to no authority to compel the probate judge to hear any case.
In my opinion, this whole part of the charter needs an overhaul. That's my opinion.
I wouldn't disagree, but that's not what we're hearing.
But since the charter is written the way it is, it would, in my opinion, be proper to have the probate judge, who is an elected judge, hear this. I would prefer to... I say again, I prefer to settle it at the town level. Less expense, less publicity, less aggravation, it's done. I would live with his decision and take it no further.
I acknowledge all of those points as valid opinions of the methodology in which this could be resolved. I'm just trying to get to a point that we all understand, that you're asking, potentially asking us to do something we cannot do, which is compel the probate... The judge of probate to hear a case that's already been heard by the municipal court judge?
I'm sorry, can you phrase that as a question?
I can. What is the mechanism that you would prefer us to employ to have this case heard by the judge of probate, who the town council has little or no authority over and cannot compel to hear any case when a case has already been heard and a decision rendered by the municipal court judge?
How about just ask him?
He doesn't work for us, he's an elected official.
That's right. That's right. So Nancy can ask him. The charter can ask him. Somebody can... I'll ask him.
Maybe I can just interject, just according to the charter, if the review board votes in the affirmative and concludes that the charges have been supported by the evidence, they then direct the town administrator to issue a complaint against Judge Donnelly, normally to be heard by... In the municipal court, but since it's the municipal court judge, it defaults to 805B, and it would be heard by the probate court judge on the complaint against...
On this complaint. But not on the original complaint, and that's what Brett is saying.
That's right.
On the original complaint, we have no authority to send it to the probate judge.
The decision has been done.
The decision's been made. Now, was that violative of the charter? That's the issue. Was the decision of the judge, Judge Donnelly, to undertake and hear the matter in the first instance, did that violate the charter? If you think it did, then you have to direct your town administrator to issue a complaint, which would be heard by the probate judge.
But this complaint, not the original complaint.
I'm not an attorney, but I'm going to disagree with what you just said, only slightly, because you said if we think that he has...
He's mine.
Yeah. That's really the crux of it, that we have to conclude that the employee or the body has knowingly taken an action or failed to take an action in his or her official capacity in violation of any terms of the charter or provisions of the charter or any ordinance, rule, regulation, blah, blah, blah.
That's the standard. You are correct.
Right. So I just want to remind people that it's not just whether or not he should have stepped down, it's we have to conclude that he was willfully violating the provisions in Section 805.
I'm going to ask Mr. Tights to speak in just a second, but I'm going to just say that when a municipal court sits, and I firmly believe that he or she, I don't think is influenced by any council. I would think anyone that sits in that seat as a judge takes into account only the facts and rules as such. I believe that Mr. Donnelly is a man of his word and follows the letter of the law. So I have tremendous issue with when a charter tells us this is the process, and you have someone who sits in that who I firmly believe would not be swayed by... I'll always speak for myself, by me. So I have some issues there. But I will allow Mr. Tights to speak now.
Mr. President, can I just ask one clarifying question? I should have asked this earlier, I'm sorry. What is the municipal court judge's salary? Is that something? Thank you.
$12,500.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tights? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to ask like a hypothetical question of Mr. Odell. If this council was totally changed and not a sitting member in the next council was present, and a charter complaint came across to that council, so that that council never had anything to do with the municipal court judge in his appointment, would, in fact, that council, a charter complaint against that council, would it be okay to be against the municipal... Heard before the municipal court judge?
No.
So even if none of us, none of the sitting council who had a charter complaint against it had anything to do with appointing the municipal court judge, you would say that they would still... It would still not be appropriate for that municipal court judge?
I'm sorry, phrase that question again.
So if there is a charter complaint against a town council where none of the town council members made any decision to appoint the municipal court judge, so totally new council, no one had anything to do with his appointment, would it still be inappropriate for a charter complaint against that council to be heard by that municipal court judge? Where they had... The town council had nothing to do with his appointment?
Are you saying that if the... That if there is a whole new council appointed or elected in two weeks, and this is still standing?
No, no, no. There's a brand-new...
Hypothetical new situation.
Brand-new charter complaint against the brand-new council.
Yeah.
Who had nothing to do with appointing the municipal court judge.
Well, then it would be proper for him to hear it. That's a different situation.
All right, but my question is, within a year, they will be appointing a judge, and Judge Donnelly may come forth as an applicant.
And I say to that again, there's been a history in Tiverton of council members serving even for consecutive decades.
But that's not what Jones... That's not the scenario Jones described.
I understand the scenario Jones stated. It was a whole different council, same judge. If a charter complaint was put forth, would it be proper for the municipal judge to hear it? I think that's what you're asking. And I said, if it's a whole new council, and it's a judge that was appointed by the previous council, then I wouldn't raise this issue.
But what I'm saying, that within a year, that whole new council will be appointing the municipal judge again.
If, sir. The key is if it's a whole new council. That's the key. What if it's the same council?
But that's... We were just asking, like...
So even in the case where, say, the charter complaint is against one member of this council who had voted against appointing the municipal court judge, would that be appropriate for...
That I answered earlier. Complaint against a single standing member who appointed, and I said I'd have no issue with that.
Anything else, Mr. O'Dell?
Do you have any other evidence or anything else you want to say, Mr. Odell?
Only that the procedure outlines that a complaint goes to the municipal court, not to a specific judge. And I did say that already. That's all I have to add. Other than that, I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Tights?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I had prepared a memorandum in support of the municipal court judge, James Donnelly, earlier, that was sent out, and a copy was emailed to Mr. Odell. I don't know if you got it. I could hand out copies, see if... And there's some extras there, too, thanks to the clerk. thanks to the clerk. And I set forth my arguments there, but obviously I will go over them briefly here.
It's just a memo, so it doesn't have to be an exhibit?
Well, I think maybe, market exhibit doesn't have to be full, but maybe market exhibit E, just to.
Continue with the letter, exhibit E.
Yes, just so it's there. I don't believe that there is any appellate review, any appeals to a court, but if they do, let them find it in the record, it'll be easy to refer to. And I'm going to summarize what I'm talking about. First of all, I have to respectfully say that I think Mr. O'Dell should be satisfied in whatever decision the probate court judge made. I think that the actions of Mr. O'Dell throughout the years belie that statement, and it's pretty obvious that. I'm making an opening statement.
You can't give my opinion.
He's making a statement, an opening statement.
Whatever he, whatever, whatever. He'll never be satisfied until he gets the answer he wants, and he'll keep going from body to body to body until he gets the answer he wants. But I think it's easy for you to give him the answer that he deserves, right here in this step. And essentially, there's three points here. The first one is, you don't even have to get to the substance of this, you've asked a lot of interesting questions, and it is a question of political, it's a political question with a small p, that's what the courts refer to it, when there's a political dispute. And that's what's at heart here, is a dispute between different branches of government and aspects of government. And you don't even have to get that far, because Mr. O'Dell had all the time leading up to the complaint hearing on August 26th, when he knew it was going to be Judge Donnelly, and he had all that time there, as well as a few weeks later, when he could have raised an objection. And he said, "Well, I wasn't that familiar with that area of the charter." Either he was, or he should have been. If he brings a complaint under the charter, he should have a basic familiarity of the charter. So he didn't raise it. And if you think about it, what he's raising is a question of fairness, well, if he thought it was unfair, then he should have raised it at that point, or any one of those points up to that time. All he had to do was object at that point, to preserve it. And I've cited some cases here, and our courts in Rhode Island are pretty clear about this, in much stricter circumstances, where people, criminal defendants are convicted of criminal offenses, and then later they raise constitutional issues, and the court says, if you don't raise them when you're being tried, then you waive it, you can't bring it later. And certainly, it's no different, if someone is raising a charter question, which is what he's trying to do, raise a charter question, suggesting it should be amended, but this complaint is really a charter question, he had all the time to raise it before the hearing and during the hearing, and there were even opportunities during the hearing where Judge Donnelly offered to, if this was going to be, if this was moot because the council had already decided not to go forward with the appointment, there were plenty of opportunities to say, "Yeah, I don't want to go forward," or "Yes, I don't think you should be hearing it because the council appoints you." So I don't think that there is any need for the council to go further than that step, I think you can dismiss it for that step alone. If you do go further, the second part gets to the question about interested or party in the language of the charter. And as Mr. Lambert pointed out, that's what the language of the charter says. It talks about where the municipal, whenever the municipal court judge is a party to or interested in any proceedings about to be heard in his or her court. He's not a party, he's not a party to that underlying complaint, he wasn't a party at the time, and even now, he's not a party to it. So the question is, is he interested in the proceedings? And there is no single, there is a definition in Black's Law Dictionary of an interested person, which is a very narrow thing, that someone's got a business interest in something, either real property or a business interest. And we've even looked for broader definitions of conflict of interest, and provided you with some other examples, including from the Ethics Commission, a conflict of interest is when there is a direct financial benefit to oneself, or to a family member or business associate. And I think it's most important here, look at the Rhode Island Superior Court, was faced with a case, you talk about a situation, a sitting Superior Court judge, Maureen McKenna-Goldberg, has been nominated for the Supreme Court, the House Judiciary Committee is going to have hearings on her nomination to that higher court, which by the way, it is an increase in salary going from the Superior Court to the Supreme Court, so there's a financial benefit there. And the court, as we've cited in State versus Oliveria, held that it was not a conflict, she was not under any obligation to recuse herself in that setting. So I think there was no obligation, or would be no obligation, for the municipal court judge to recuse himself, which first of all, there was never even a request of him, but if there was a request, he wouldn't have been required to do it. It's a very remote possibility, first of all, we know that two out of seven of the councilors will not be here in a year for reappointment because they're not seeking reelection. We don't know what other council members would be here. For that matter, Mr. O'Dell is running for the council, he might be on the council and have a conflict, we don't know those, there's no direct benefit or detriment that may appear. And our Supreme Court certainly sanctioned it when they were willing to not have a problem with a confirmation hearing for a Supreme Court judgeship, and think that someone should recuse themselves. Bless you. And finally, I think if you look at the plain language of the charter, as you said, the authors of the charter provided this to go to the municipal court. Even if Mr. O'Dell didn't know, the authors of the charter knew that we had an appointed municipal court judge and an elected probate judge. If they wanted to get it to a non-political person, someone with, independently elected, they had that opportunity, they could have just said right there in the sentence, "It goes to the probate judge," or they could have sent it to the town clerk, or the town treasurer, if they wanted to send it to some other elected party. They could have sent it to the elected budget board, there were lots of other elected bodies and people that they could have sent it to. But no, they made a decision in the municipal court, knowing that the municipal court was appointed position. They took other actions to minimize the political influence on the municipal court by making the appointments in the off-year, which by the way, is unusual in most cities and towns. Tiverton does it, most cities and towns have the appointment of the municipal court right after the election of the new council. But they did that, they put it a year aside to do it, and then they made a deliberate decision that said, "It's going to go to the municipal court." So for all those reasons, and as I said, I don't even think you have to get to the second two, I think the first one enough that it was enough that it was waived, I think you should find that there's no cause to go forward with this charter complaint, and it should be dismissed.
I think you can deliberate, discuss it.
All right.
Or you can ask, Mr. Tights, any questions?
I, I don't know if Mr. Tights is the person to answer this, but.
Mr. Donnelly is here to.
Oh, good, excellent.
Ask him, although he has not been sworn in, but.
Well, why don't we remit to that right now? Mr. Oliver?
Judge, you saw Mr. Tights' testimony about the case, should we truth the whole truth, and then we'll know the truth?
I do.
So I'm speaking in sort of a hypothetical what-if scenario, that you were hearing this previous, whatever we're referring to that complaint as.
Are we referring to it as anything?
The initial charter complaint against the majority of this council. If you were to find that this council, majority of this council, had violated the charter, what punishments exist in the charter for the wrongdoers?
If I may, I'm going to respond to your question, I mean, unless you have a direct factual question about what did Mr. Donnelly do, or at the time, I would respond to the.
I don't really care who answers the question.
Legal question. And it set forth in the charter that he has the ability to remove people from office and fine them not more than $300.
Okay. So I would suggest that if the judge were to remove me from office, I would have an awfully hard time voting to not reappoint him, or to have some other financial damage to his, his position. So I think that's, that's, that wasn't meant to be a joke, it just was meant to be that these are serious matters, and the municipal court judge is given the authority when he has found it appropriate to, I mean, $300 is $300, but take away our office, that's a pretty substantial punishment for someone who's elected. The other question I have is, I really kind of want to dig down to this, because as we've talked, and as Jay mentioned some things, really, the, the two distinctions are this party to the lawsuit, party to the proceeding, and interested in, and I think, for at least my understanding, it's obvious that the judge was not a party to it, he was hearing the case, he was not a complainant, or defendant, a respondent, whatever, they, not a big city lawyer, but. So the other one is this interested in, and I think, I'm not sure if it's appropriate to also get a response from Mr. O'Dell at this time, but I'd like to. Oh, okay, good, I didn't know if I, I didn't know if I could. So I guess that is really a huge component to this, and your, your argument is that he's obviously interested in proceeding, and while there are legal definitions and non-legal definitions, is there anything you can add to your statement that his income is, is due to his appointment, and we appointed him, therefore, he is interested in an outcome that we are a party to?
I would just state for the record that I did raise the issue before the decision, first of all. Second of all, in my opinion, $12,000 is a direct financial benefit to anyone, it doesn't have to be $5 million to be a benefit.
When did you raise the issue before?
I'm sorry, that's, that's, none of what I've asked was answered, but let's start with what you said, you said that you raised it before the decision, but you didn't raise it before hearing the case, he heard the case, right? That's the distinction.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the decision came out on Friday or Thursday, and you had raised it on a Tuesday or Wednesday, something like that?
I believe it was 72 hours before.
Okay.
People had the decision.
Mr. Pelletier?
Yes.
In connection with that question that you just asked, could I ask another question, Mr. O'Dell? Before you filed the complaint, and before the hearing.
The original complaint?
The complaint that you filed, and the hearing that you had, had you ever consulted with an attorney in Rhode Island?
Yes.
And did that attorney ever raise the issue of recusal?
At the first, at the first hearing, no, he did not raise the issue to me, because he was not totally familiar with our town's charter.
But you had consulted with an attorney before the hearing, am I correct?
Yes.
The reason I'm asking that, Mr. O'Dell, and I'm not trying to make life difficult, I think as a layperson, I took the position at our last town council meeting, that we should have some leeway when laypeople bring these type of lawsuits.
That's how the charter is set up.
And I think you're absolutely right. But, I mean, there are still legal concepts, for example, there is a legal definition of what a party is, I'm not trying to make light of this. But there is also a concept that Mr. Tights has raised, and that's the concept of recusal. And in all honesty, I'm not so sure that I would, I would, as a layperson, expect another layperson to understand the concept of recusal, and neither would I, as an attorney, expect that. But the answer that you've given is that, at some point, you were in contact with an attorney, who I would hold to a somewhat higher legal standard. And that is, I think, any attorney you consulted with should have known immediately of the concept of recusal, and should have advised you, looking at the charter provisions, that that was an issue that you would have to raise before there was any substantive hearing. And this issue of recusal wasn't raised by you until well after the hearing. If counsel was at all involved in advising you, or you consulted with counsel in Rhode Island before that hearing, I don't see how you're going to get beyond the issue that Mr. Tights has raised, and that is the issue of recusal, this'll come up if you try to take an appeal on this lawsuit.
Anyone else on the council?
Oh, I, let's continue, yeah. The other was direct financial benefit, and I will eventually get back to the question I asked, if I can remember what it was. That, I, I think when I think of direct financial benefit, I think of, there is a financial benefit to the outcome of a case. Someone stands to gain land, or rights, or actual dollars, as direct financial benefit. I think the fact that someone has a salary, you're arguing is directly related to how we vote. If we devote somebody else, the benefit goes to somebody else. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, any, any, I'm trying to come around to how a judge who is paid by taxpayer dollars, and serves at the appointment of a body, could hear any case with anyone in town who potentially could benefit him in future? I mean, that's what we're talking about, we're not talking about a guarantee, we're not talking about that Judge Donnelly opines that we are not in violation of the charter, and we write a check for $12,500. That is how I view direct financial benefit, at the conclusion of hearing a case, someone benefits financially, and if he were interested in the outcome of that case, and that person benefited him, or he benefited, that is one thing. The second is this kind of arrangement, where I'm trying to imagine an instance where a case he would hear potentially could not benefit, there are so many that he would potentially benefit in future. And if, if, if the ability to potentially benefit from an action, or a relationship, or something in the future is a disqualifier, I don't know how he can hear any cases.
I say again, the easiest way to avoid this in the future, and it is coming in the future, there is a follow-up charter complaint, the way to avoid it in the future is to make the municipal court judge position elected.
I don't disagree with that opinion, I would just say, we're not here to discuss that, and we're here to solve, we're here to render a decision on a complaint, an actual complaint, not to prevent future complaints that don't exist yet. So I'm, I'm trying to understand if.
I'm sorry, it exists, it's already been filed.
Well, we can't change the charter between now and the time we hear that one, so I think, what I'm trying to understand is, as the charter is written now, is it your opinion that any case where a judge potentially in the future might have financial gain through a relationship, a decision, an association, just being in the room at the same time, is he compelled by the charter to recuse himself?
Is he compelled by the charter?
Yeah.
No.
So then how is that, how is, if the, if the charter doesn't compel him to recuse himself from hearing a case that he potentially could benefit financially in the future from the result of, how can we determine tonight that he has willfully violated the charter by not recusing himself?
That's your decision. My decision, my decision would be, if I were the municipal judge, and this was brought up, then. up, then I could, I could recuse myself. No one would have to ask me.
Sure. I agree. That's not what we're hearing. What we're hearing is the case. And what I'm trying to understand, your job as the fellow who filed the complaint, is to convince us why that is the case, why he willfully violated the charter. And if that isn't compelling, it, I mean-
In my opinion, just hearing it was a violation. That's my opinion. That was set forth under 805B. I think he should have recused. Would have been, it would have been very straightforward if he would have recused, but the way this has gone on, it's destined to just keep going on as Mr. Tights said.
I would just opine that that makes it awfully difficult for someone up here to make a decision if, or it makes it difficult to make a decision in your favor if your argument is, it's self-explanatory, and I'm asking you to clarify. I'm not compelled like you're compelled. I mean, you filed the charter complaint, and it's your obligation as the person who's accusing someone of impropriety or a violation of the document to provide enough sufficient evidence that makes me think that, yes, maybe he did do something.
I'll state it like this. If I were the municipal court judge and the council appointed me municipal court judge, and it was a majority, and the complaint was against the majority, personally speaking, I myself, without even being asked, would have recused.
I, and I think that's fine.
That is what I'm saying.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, if the charter does not compel him to do that, he's not in violation of the charter.
As I said in the beginning of my opening, I'm not going to argue the case all night. I just want to preserve the record.
Okay.
I've said what I got to say on it.
The biggest issue I have is that the charter is clear on how the process works. I firmly believe that any person that is appointed in that position is independent. I think you can look at it on the state level. When state judges are appointed, they are beholden to the legislative body or the governor, you know, who has, if you want to say, interest in. So, I think that does not, in my opinion, does not carry weight. The charter is explicit in saying that complaints against the charter, against the council, go to the municipal court. He, as judge of the municipal court, should hear it. And whether it's a majority of the people or not, it is against the council. You know, you chose to file a complaint against individuals on the council.
I believe you should reread that. It says it goes to the court, not to the judge.
I said, I said it, I said it goes to the municipal court, and he, as the judge of the municipal court, should hear it. There is nothing in the charter that says that he shouldn't hear it. He is the judge of the municipal court.
But it does say that it can be handed off.
If, if he feels that he has a conflict.
Yes, yes, I agree.
Okay. And again, I think that any person sitting in that position, that is their job, to be independent and to deliberate strictly on the facts. And in this case, I firmly believe that Judge Donnelly did that. He got the information, he reviewed it, he weighted it based on both sides and rendered his decision. I personally find that this complaint is unfounded and unjustified.
Mr. President, can I, can I ask a question of Judge Donnelly directly? Judge, can you explain for us why you didn't feel the need to recuse yourself?
I took an oath of office, and when I took that oath of office, it was to failing and harshly all matters that came before me. I didn't think that I had to recuse myself. Secondly, I tried at various points during that hearing to actually get out of making a decision because I suggested to the parties that the case was moot and wasn't ripe for hearing. The parties didn't tell me not to go forward at that point in time, even though I was offering them that opportunity, because at that point in time, the council had already, I guess, rescinded their earlier positions. So, at that point, if you notice, my decision was not on, was a declaratory judgment. I didn't issue a decision saying the council was right or wrong, but saying that the council has certain powers, because that's what I asked them, if they wanted me to make a decision, even though it was not ripe at that point in time. So, I, everybody was in agreement, I made the decision.
Thank you.
I just want to make one final comment. So, in reading this language that Ed was just talking about, and it describes the methodology in which a complaint against the majority of the town council, it should be filed in the municipal court. And if you go to section 805, that's where it lists the municipal court, and it talks about the duties and jurisdiction that the charter and the Rhode Island General Law apply the municipal court. And then it lists the municipal court judge as a position that is appointed and a good standing in the bar of State of Rhode Island. But above that section is an entirely different section, section 804, which outlines the jurisdiction and duties of the probate court and the jurisdiction and duties of the judge of probate, which is an entirely different court in the town of Tiburon. The only recitation it makes in section 805, in the municipal court section, to the judge of probate is if there's a vacancy or an absence or the party is interested in the proceeding, then the judge of probate fulfills that duty. And then, in that case, if he is unable to fulfill those duties, we go to someone else that the town council has able to appoint from a qualified candidate. So, it doesn't, to me, look like when a complaint comes to the municipal court, you get to choose which judge you, who hears the case. I would, I would make the argument that the municipal court, the jurisdiction is, the municipal court judge has the jurisdiction in the municipal court, and only in event that's stated shall the probate judge be an interim or a fill-in or whatever you want to call it. Is that, is that not, you're arguing that in any case, the judge of probate could be, in any cases referred to the municipal court, you would be able to choose which judge or the court would be able to choose which judge heard the case? Is that?
This is a rare case against a majority of a council. I'll say again, it's never come up before.
But it's provided for in the charter?
It, it needs to be changed. It needs to be changed.
Okay.
But we're not here to discuss changing the charter.
I didn't say that. He asked me a question, and I answered it.
I know, but it's very difficult to get information out of, even if I agree, I 100% agree, we need to change the charter so it's more clear. That's not up for, not up for a decision tonight, and I don't have the authority to change the charter. What I'm trying to understand is, there's a provision in the charter that says if there's a complaint, a charter complaint against the majority of the town council, it goes to the probate court. And if you look up the section that's-
Municipal.
I'm sorry, municipal court, sorry. If you go to the municipal court section, you find that the only person that has jurisdiction over municipal court matters is the municipal court judge. And only in rare instances, when he is unable to perform his duties, does the probate judge step in. So, what I'm trying to, I guess, I'm trying to elicit some kind of opinion from you that if there is no provision in the charter that says this person has to recuse himself, they are compelled to recuse himself, and further, in the charter, it states that this is the process in which these matters are heard in the event of the majority of the council being party to the suit. How do we come to the conclusion that the judge acted improperly or acted willfully in violation of the charter?
I'll state again, in my opinion, the judge was an interested party. That is my statement. I stand by it. In courts and in hearings and in these kind of processes, nothing ever changes if it's never challenged. That's the idea behind precedents. If you don't agree with something, you challenge it. I'm challenging it. I don't make a career of this. I'm not a lawyer.
I know, but you have an opinion-
But my statement is, is the way it changes is if it's challenged.
Okay. Let me just ask one last question. But you have an opinion, Jim, that is, that there was a violation and that Judge Donnelly is an interested party in the proceeding. And that's all you say. And I'm trying to understand how I come to a rational conclusion that there is a methodology in the charter that states what we do in this exact instance, you disagree with it, and you think that he is an interested party. That's all you'll say, and that's all the information I can get out of you. I'm having a hard time getting to a point where I can figure out if there is any more substance. You've stated he's an interested party, but you don't, you haven't stated exactly how that is the case. All you've said is he, his income is because he is, he works as the municipal court judge and we appoint him. It's not self-explanatory, I assure you, because I'm not the only one that's having a hard time with this.
Then I would say, make whatever decision you're going to make.
Mr. Tights?
I'll echo that last statement I'm saying. I think you should get to your decision, but I just, I will give you an example of a situation where there was a conflict of interest with the municipal court judge, because it actually happened within the last couple of years. There was a violation, zoning violation brought against the owner of a mobile home, and the owner of the land was the mobile home park, so the violation was against that as well. And that mobile home park was a client of Judge Donnelly's. So, he recused himself from the case, and it was heard by the probate court judge. That's a conflict of interest. It was a criminal action brought against someone who was a client. That's the sort of thing. Obviously, it doesn't have to be that exact situation, but that's an example of what I believe that is meant in that section of the charter. And then, again, I would echo Mr. Odell's request that you make your decision.
So, the issue before this body is based on the testimony and the evidence that you heard tonight and the weighing of that testimony and evidence, is whether or not the municipal court judge, Judge Donnelly knowingly violated any of the provisions of the charter specifically in failing to step aside or recuse himself from hearing the charter complaint involving the authority of the town council to appoint a town planner, which was heard on August 26, 2014, and the decision rendered and filed in or about, no, shortly thereafter, I don't know the exact date of the decision. That's about a month after. So, that's the issue before you. And you can, you can discuss it or you can make a motion.
Is there anything further from the council?
May I?
Yes, Mr. Tights.
Just two things. One, with all due respect, Mr. Olivero, I think, as he was saying that, he said, if you find any violation of the charter, and I think it's specifically a violation of 805B, that's all that's before you, not any other section.
Agreed, agreed.
And then, the other thing, too, just to remind the provision that it needs a two-thirds vote in order to proceed, which since there are seven of you, is five. There need to be five affirmative votes in order to find that this complaint has merit.
Can I interrupt a moment?
Yes.
Because talking about clients and everything else, I have to recuse myself in that Judge Donnelly is a, a member of my family is a client of Mr. Donnelly that I didn't realize. So, I have to recuse myself. Sorry.
Okay. Okay.
So, it has to be four, four of them.
Yep, four. Okay. Anything else from the council? Okay. At this point, then, I will entertain a motion. And again, only my opinion that there is no just cause to substantiate the charter complaint against Judge Donnelly. And at this time, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Do you want a second on that motion, though, Mr. President?
Can we just, can we clarify the motion, Mr. President?
The motion is to say that there is no charter complaint. We're not upholding the charter complaint against Judge Donnelly, saying that there is no merit.
And the case should go no further.
And the case should go no further. Second. Okay. No, I actually need somebody to make that motion. Some move, now a second.
Second, now discussion.
The way of discussion, and maybe the attorneys would be able to, I think that what we're doing at this stage is making findings of fact.
Yeah.
If we go to the merits immediately, which I would consider to be the second issue, we will not get back to the issue of waiver. That issue has been waived, so as an issue of fact, we've been asked to decide two issues. One, whether or not there is a cause for a charter complaint. That's number one. But I consider it the second issue. The first issue is whether or not the complaint itself and the whole issue of the complaint has been waived by the recusal issue.
Well, I, if I can just counsel you on that, the waiver issue, generally, Mr. Tights is correct that, at least in the court of law, if failure to raise an issue on a timely basis, it's waived for all intents and purposes. In this instance, however, I, my own opinion is, I think you should decide it on the merits because it is a pro se litigant and that there should be some flexibility when you're talking about a charter complaint violation, so that you should err on the side of caution. And I think it should be heard on the merits and not thrown out on a technicality. So, although it is a strong argument, and it is still an argument, should this matter go further, it, that will be an argument by, I'm sure, the town in its defense, but I think it's more prudent to decide it on the merits. So, one of the issues is whether or not, based on the, so getting around that is getting to the merits of the appeal, and that is whether or not the framing of the charter, whether or not the complaint is even appropriate, given the fact that, as Councilman Palatier eloquently indicated, you have a situation where the framers of the charter knew that if there was a complaint against the majority or any member of the council, that those matters, now you can't sit as the review board, it then defaults to the municipal court judge. And that is the body that hears the charter complaint, which was the case in the town planner decision. When you go to the duties and responsibilities of the municipal court judge, there are very specific prescribed exceptions to him or her hearing a complaint of any sort, including a charter complaint. And so, now you have to ask yourself, well, was there a vacancy? Clearly, you can take judicial notice, there was no vacancy. Was Judge Donnelly a party to the proceeding? Was he a party to the proceeding? I think that's pretty clear. No, he was not a party. He was not the subject of that complaint. Lastly, was he interested in the proceeding regarding the town planner? And I think you heard arguments, and you heard some of your brother and sister council members struggle with, well, what is interested? Merely because he serves at the pleasure of the council and receives a salary associated to his duties of meeting out justice in an impartial, unbiased fashion, does that make him an interest, interested in the proceeding? I don't know of any cases that would support that general proposition. I think it's more attuned to, will he receive a direct benefit from that proceeding, which makes him interested in that proceeding? So, those are the issues that you need to address.
I'm going to follow those instructions, and I'll call them instructions. The only reason I hesitated- The only reason I hesitated, and I agree, just going to the merits of whether or not there's a cause of action for a Charter violation. Mr. O'Dell has indicated in his testimony, he's indicated, I believe, in his opening statement, that he has an attorney. He's indicated in correspondence that he has an attorney. And he's indicated in response to one of my questions that he has consulted with council before the complaint was filed. That being the case, I don't think that in an appellate process, the court would necessarily take our position, which is the position I had two weeks ago, that a layperson should be given leniency in filing Charter complaints without the obligation of retaining counsel. But once you tell me that you've retained counsel, it really does, Jim, become a legal issue that you're going to have to address someday at the appellate level.
Okay. All right. I'm just going to ask, Matt, if you would just...
Do you want me to do some findings of facts and conclusions of law, present them at the next... I mean, that's the other option.
No.
No, that's right.
No.
No, it is an option. That is not an option.
I don't need the motion to be...
Motion framed. Would you frame it for us, Matt?
So I think the motion would be whether or not Mr. O'Dell has established through the evidence and the testimony of the parties that Judge Donnelly violated the Charter, knowingly violated the Charter, when he refused to recuse himself in hearing a Charter complaint lodged against the majority of the town council relating to the town council's authority to appoint a town planner.
And can we just, for the record, clarify what a yea or nay vote would indicate against that motion?
A yea vote would say that we agree that Judge Donnelly did not knowingly violate the Charter.
A what rule?
Yea.
A yea.
Did not knowingly violate the Charter.
Well, the motion was, did he knowingly violate the Charter when he refused to recuse himself? So a yea would be, you agree with the complainant's position. And a no is, we didn't. We don't agree.
No.
May I be heard?
Sure.
I'm confused.
I think the motion that's on the floor was to find that there was not a violation. That's what I think the motion is.
I thought whether or not Mr. O'Dell has established through the evidence and testimony that Judge Donnelly...
So are you just doing that as a finding of fact first, before you get to the motion?
Yeah, it's a finding of fact. Do you agree that, I mean, we can do findings of fact?
Well, I think if you're going to do it that way, then you've got to do those findings of fact, or you just go to adopt the findings of fact as discussed, and have a motion, and maybe have a new motion. But the motion that I heard from Mr. Gerlach, and seconded by Denise DiMediris, I think, was that there was not violation. Right, but that's still what's pending. That's the motion pending on the floor.
This would be a finding of fact.
Right. This would be a finding of fact in support.
This would be a finding of fact in support of the motion. See, okay. All right.
Sunday get bullshit sickness.
So I guess the discussion is, do you agree? That would be a finding of fact.
So perhaps you're asking Mr. Gerlach if he would adopt as a finding of fact that Mr. O'Dell had not established.
That's correct.
Would it help if I just withdrew my motion, and we started over? I withdraw my motion.
I said, do you withdraw your second?
Okay. The motion is that we would accept the fact.
So just walk us through the difference between what we're doing here is adopting a finding of fact. Explain to the non-legal...
There's discussion, you have a complaint. You have a complaint in front of you, you've heard testimony, evidence, and argument. So now, really, the issue before you is whether or not you find that there was evidence sufficient to support a finding that Judge Donnelly knowingly violated the Charter when he refused to recuse himself in a hearing on August 26 involving a Charter complaint against the majority of the council pertaining to its authority to appoint the town planner. That's the issue before you. That's the question to be issued.
It's not refused, it's failed to. Failed to recuse himself.
Failed to.
Yeah, he wasn't asked, so he couldn't refuse.
Do you find that he violated the Charter? And the answer is yes or no, when he failed to recuse himself. So you can each answer that question. That's really the question and the finding that you have to make this evening. So you can do a roll call, and then do a motion to dismiss the complaint.
Again, I'm just going to ask to some clarifying questions. Because I think the finding of fact is already party to what we're going to decide. We've listened to the evidence. The evidence is in record, so that is not in dispute. The motion is whether or not we believe that Judge Donnelly knowingly violated the Charter by failing to recuse himself in the matter on August 26. So I think the finding of fact is already substantive to all the exhibits and testimony we've had.
Well, I agree. I agree. You can incorporate all the discussion that you've already had, and the questions that you've asked, and the comments that you've made.
The original motion is...
I just want to cut to the chase.
That's why I suggested earlier that very motion, okay?
Yeah, it was Jane that brought up the discussion.
Okay, all right. So would you read?
So I have what was the last page that says, whether or not you believe Judge Donnelly violated the Charter by failing to recuse himself on August 26.
Whether or not...
What was just stated?
Yeah, whether or not you find that Judge Donnelly knowingly violated the Charter when he failed to recuse himself in another Charter complaint involving the authority of the town council to appoint a town planner. That's the motion. Who wants to adopt that motion?
So I will make that motion, but here's my question. Is that a yes or no vote?
Yes.
Okay. We just do yes or no. Okay. Because it's a whether or not.
Well, that's the issue that's before you.
Why don't we just say...
Why don't we just...
Someone can make a motion.
Yeah, why don't we just say...
Yeah. Why don't... Did Judge Donnelly?
Not whether, did.
Just take out the whether or not and put did. Is that past legal muster?
That's somewhat definitive. Whether leaves an opening, whether or not you're thinking about it either way.
If you've got it transcribed, I'd make the motion.
So it's did.
And I second it.
Okay. Just for clarification, would you read the final motion?
I'll have to review that on the table. I have, did Judge Donnelly knowingly violate the Charter by failing to recuse himself on a Charter complaint hearing August 26?
Against the town council in a matter involving...
Majority.
Complaint heard August 26 against the town council.
The majority of the town council.
Against the majority of the town council.
Oh, on the authority, on whether...
No, I believe it's a hiring of the town planner.
Yes.
Yes.
We have a motion made by Mr. Palatier, seconded by Mrs. DiMediris. I will ask for a roll call vote, yea or nay, beginning with Mr. Gerlach.
Nay. I do not believe that he knowingly violated the Charter.
No would be a yea.
No, that would be a nay.
No, it'd be a nay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's just a did.
Yeah.
I was just going to say no.
Mr. Ruda.
Okay. I'll just have two quick things to say. Mr. O'Dell, I don't exactly disagree with a lot of things you brought up tonight, and my observations tonight have been, basically, we have to fix the Charter, blah, 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 so on and so forth. That being said, unfortunately, in this position where I'm sitting now, I am handcuffed by what the Charter states, what we have to do, what we have to make a judgment on. So with that said, it's hard to prove whether or not Judge Donnelly did, in fact, knowingly violate the Charter, so on and so forth. It's difficult to prove that. And based on what I have for evidence and what I have to make a judgment on per the Charter, I do have to vote a nay.
Mr. Lambert?
Nay.
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 No.
So is there a motion to dismiss the complaint?
I want to entertain a motion to dismiss the complaint.
Based on that finding.
Based on the finding.
Based on the findings, I move that we dismiss the complaint.
Second.
We have a motion, and second, again, I will ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Gerlach?
Yea.
Nay.
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 You're dismissing.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second to dismiss.
The motion is to dismiss the complaint based on the findings.
Yes, dismiss the complaint.
Mr. Ruda?
Nay.
Yes.
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 Five to one. To dismiss.
Thank you, Mr. O'Dell. Thank you, Judge Donnelly. Thank you, Mr. Tights.
Yeah, take it.
Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break. We're just waiting for Mr. Lambert to return. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, at this point, I'd like to move items K2 and D2 to proceed immediately on the agenda, starting with K2, is that the first one?
Yeah.
And D2 is the second item.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Lambert.
Second.
Now, second, all those in favor. Motion carries. Okay, K2 is Lawrence Court status update on agreement and request for council decision. Mr. Tights?
Thank you, Mr. President. The situation is that previously, the town council had voted essentially on a compromise with the Lawrence Court thing. Although the town does not have a legal responsibility to maintain the private portion of the road, it turns out to be for the town's benefit somewhat to maintain it, because it provides, basically, a turnaround so the town trucks can go down through the public park, turn around, and come back up, without having to back up. So this proposed compromise, as negotiated, would provide that the town would maintain it minimally, essentially twice per year, keep it graded, keep it to the usual and customary standards of a private unpaved road, and then thus provide the services of trash collection and plowing and sanding. And then the landowners would be responsible for anything beyond that particular maintenance that was required. And the condition was that all of the homeowners would have to sign this agreement, so that it would be binding and not come back to a future council years from now. People saying, you know, I don't want to have to pay for the repairs. It now needs major repairs, not just a little grading and filling that I don't want to pay for, that the town should pay for. My understanding is that several of the homeowners were not willing to sign it. We only have some of them who may be members of the association, but we don't have all of the signatories. And so it is back here to you for direction as to how you want to proceed.
Were the residents unwilling to sign them? Or I thought when we last had this meeting, everybody said...
We have a resident here.
This is Mr. Neuss. He is the president of the homeowners' association. And just for the record, the signatures we have are the five offices of the homeowners'.
How many residents are there? Residents is...
Okay. But for the record, please state your name and your address.
Kevin Neuss, 144 Lawrence Court.
Okay.
The association has 19 members throughout the homeowners'. There's several other residents there that do, for some reason or another, are not part of the association. The association was formed back in the early 60s because of the well, there's 20 families on the well, now there's only 19.
Okay.
There's, on the town part of the road, there's three members that live on the town road. There's two non-members that live on the town road. There was a concern about mailboxes in the letter that we, the officers, signed, that the mailboxes, we don't have individual mailbox, we have a group mailbox that is on the end, almost at the end of the town road. So that wouldn't injure. There was nobody that was unwilling to sign. There's, I have several residents that own the property but don't live there. They rent it out. I actually have one resident there, a property owner around it, rents their property out. They moved to Florida several years ago and have never come back. So it's hard to get residents to come here and sign the papers or ask. We were asked first, when this came up as an issue, the officers, I got the phone call being the president, to come up to the town hall at that meeting with the street committee. And we did that. I was able to get the other offices, and I think there was two other residents we got to go. But everybody in our association is willing to accept this. They're just asking if you would accept on the five offices' signatures.
So Andy, let me ask you this. Yeah, Mr. Neuss mentioned that there are only five residences that actually have frontage on Lawrence Court.
No, I think on the public part.
On the town portion.
Oh. Right. I'm not comfortable with just having the association. We've had problems in other areas of town with associations falling apart over time and disbanding. And so I want to record this in the land evidence records. So I want the notarized signature of every property owner on the private section of the road, which is what they said they would do if we're going to do this. Now, they don't have to come in in person. That was done as a convenience to saying, come into town hall, we'll notarize it for you. The people in Florida, send them the document, let them have it signed in front of a Florida notary and sent back. I don't care where it gets notarized, but I would not recommend that the council accept this unless every single one of them sign it and have it notarized, so that we can then record it on the land evidence records, because it's important to protect the future people who buy this, because realtors don't always disclose these sort of things, sellers don't always disclose it. It needs to be in the land evidence records that this is going to be a future obligation.
And how many, Mr. Neuss, did you say are no longer live there?
There's four don't live there.
We must have addresses. We send them tax bills somewhere, correct?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. President, but aren't there also 20-some people that utilize this town road to get to Dillon Isle and this, that, and the other? So we are never going to get all these signatures, because some of them haven't anything to do with the homeowners'. Because some of them haven't anything even to do with the homeowners' association.
But just by virtue of having access to it doesn't necessarily make it... Up there in the party to the agreement.
We also have two, two residents, homeowners right now that do not belong to the association whatsoever.
Now, you said, but both of the, but both of them are on the town portion of the road? The accepted portion?
No.
No?
They're on the private park. It's actually, one, there's three. One is getting ready to come onto the system, and they will be a part of the association. We're putting in a new septic system and gonna be tying into our wells and our water system. But there's three, two that never belonged to the association in well over twenty years. There's another one that right down at the waterfront by the beach there that he's owns the property, was renting it out, and it has been disconnected from the water system, and he's not a member of the association any longer. And it's almost, there's nobody lives there. It's, let's say it's a bend and he comes down here to do things once in a while, but it's, there's nobody living there. It's not habitable.
Is the objective to get signatures of anyone, notarized signatures of anyone who ha, is a property owner on the town portion of the road? Is that the objective here? Or everyone?
No, only the private section, because they're the ones that are going to be ultimately responsible for maintaining that private section.
For the private section. Okay. Regardless of whether or not they are members in good standing of the homeowners' association.
Correct.
Okay. So I don't think we should consider member, non-member of homeowners' association. I mean, the objective is to get notarized signatures of everyone who has property on the private portion of this roadway.
That's correct. So if we're going to be maintaining, if we agree that we're gonna be maintaining the roadway in front of their home, they're going to be agreeing that we're only gonna be doing the minimal maintenance of it and that the big problems are still gonna be theirs.
And if it takes a number of months longer...
Well, winter's coming.
I know, but...
Well, I would write...
I don't think there should be a deadline. I'd hate to see you cut off snow plowing as a, as a safety thing, but maybe, maybe, maybe it is time to have the trash truck turn around.
Might motivate back.
Yeah. Again, I mean, this has been pending, you know, since May. And I know you don't have control over getting the signatures. The only thing I can suggest, Mr. Tights, Mr. Tights, the only thing I can suggest is that Mr. Nois can get the signatures, the notarized signatures of all the people that belong to the association. We have through tax records the names of everybody else and send them the agreements. So if we do not receive them all by a date certain, then we will not continue trash pickup.
That would be fine. I'd just like to ask a follow-up question. The clerk raises an issue that I'm interested in, because this is the first time. There's another development on an island beyond?
It's, yeah, it used to be an island at one time.
Okay, right, okay, if it's connected to you. And how many homeowner, how many homeowners are there out there?
It's sixteen.
And what's the name of that area again you said?
Delano Island.
Okay. And those sixteen people get to, their only access is over to your private road?
Correct.
How do they have that right to get over your private road? Was it deeded to them or, I mean, shouldn't they, shouldn't they be contributing as well as a private thing to you for maintaining it?
That, Delano Island was, if I remember right, was established long before Lawrence Court was.
Okay.
So that road was there.
So the road was there.
So the road was already there.
Joe St. Lawrence was the gentleman that started that, that started developing. I don't know what happened with Delano Island. It was already established long before, but in the early nineteen sixties, Joe St. Lawrence was establishing what is now known as Lawrence Court, selling off the different pieces of property. When he passed away, it was one well servicing almost twenty families. He passed away, his wife took him over for about a year, and then that's when the association was formed, everything, she didn't want anything to do with it. Everything was formed in the association so they could take care of the work. It was basically for the water system, the portable water system for the...
But those people on Delano's Island drive to their homes over your private road without contributing anything towards the maintenance of it? That's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
They were established before we were, and that was the use of that.
So it's, okay.
I don't know how to answer that.
Okay, well, that's fine. I mean, my main concern is the homeowners along the part that were maintained. So I would, I would concur with the president's suggestion that maybe given a certain amount of time further to obtain the signatures of at least all the association members.
Mr. Nois, you think that is feasible to get the rest of the signatures without much fuss, or?
Need to get the...
Us, you, between our shared efforts, I mean, you might have better access to get the folks in the homeowners' association.
We can, we can mail them to them, but somebody's gonna talk to them to make sure they sign it and notarize it and get it back.
I mean, you're the friendly face, you know?
Like I said, there's, we got this, this one that used to be a member that's not, has been disconnected. They will not be helpful whatsoever.
Yeah, but they are, they are a property owner, so we would have to send them the notice.
What I'm asking then, and that is, is if he refuses to sign or anything, are we gonna be, everybody else gonna be held hostage, so to speak, because he won't sign? Is that gonna destroy this?
At this point, yes. Because without everybody, then we still have that problem of someone coming and saying the town has a responsibility, the town's obligated to do it. If we're, we're entering into a contract and it only works if everybody agrees to it.
But if they can't get that one person to do it, ever?
Well, I, I think we can deal with that when we get to it.
Yeah, I think we should make the effort. You know, obviously, you can get to all the members. I will ask that we send the agreement out to all the property owners. You know, obviously, you can talk to the ones that are members, the property owners that are no longer residing there, you know, we'll mail it to them because we have their addresses on tax bills so we can get to them. And that one individual, again, you know, we will send it to them, and the only thing we have to figure is the date certain.
Well, when we do send it, we ought to make it clear that this agreement is to maintain the status quo and will preserve services absent this agreement.
There'll be no service.
I mean, that's the thing. That's what we're, I would think someone who, even if they were unwilling to sign a document just because they're being difficult or whatever the situation is, would appreciate that if their, snow is not gonna get plowed and their trash is not gonna get picked up any, any longer, that, that might motivate them slightly. I don't know, maybe not. You seem to know if I don't.
Mr. President?
No, it's not happening.
So he's not gonna care?
Yeah, but, but should he decide to sell, that, that would be, you know, what were you gonna say, Ms. Lambert?
Excuse me, Ms. Lambert. This is only for the homeowners that are on the private portion of the road, not the town-accepted portion of the road with Lawrence Court. So how many homes do you have that are actually on that private portion? Is that the sixteen you gave me?
Fifteen.
There are fifty?
No, 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 that's, not just members of the homeowners' association, property owners.
Fifteen properties.
But Mr. Nois just said, members.
Is the abandoned one on the private?
Yeah, I know, properties.
Is the abandoned property on the private section?
Yes.
So that would be sixteen.
Sixteen. And then there's one, two, three non-members right now.
So that's nineteen total.
Original nineteen, I was...
Yeah, but are they, are they on the private or the public?
Private.
So all nineteen are on the private?
Yes.
Okay. And then there are an additional five that are on the public side?
Yes.
Okay, so there are twenty-four in total?
Yes.
Do you, do you have meetings of this association?
Once a year.
Or you could call a meeting together? Maybe I could go down with my notary stamp and try to get some in bulk. I mean, I see this as a futile effort and it's, it's not gonna go anywhere.
We're not gonna get them all together.
No, we're not. So you're asking us just to, okay, I'll send them out. I don't mind sending them out, I'm just saying...
But we need a date certain.
Yeah. It's not gonna respond by then.
February ninth is the date we were requesting to continue Daniel Church Estates to, and we get to that on the agenda. So may I suggest that same date for this as a date certain?
Right. So, so we would want to return...
We'll continue the trash and snow plowing.
But we want, we want the notarized signatures back by February ninth?
No, before.
Well, actually, I think we should say February first.
February first, yeah.
And we would put this on for review on the, the meeting of February ninth.
Right.
Mr. Eva is...
Yeah, okay.
Mr. President, as a member of the street committee, I was at all the meetings, and I strongly support Mr. Tights, Mr. Gerlach, that it should not only be the association, it should be the property owners as well.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're ensuring, yeah.
This is what we were told we would get, and it hasn't come. There was some problem with getting the legal document, but I strongly support.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, Mr. Nois, are there any concerns from the folks you've talked to about the document itself?
No.
Okay. Cause you made some mention about mailboxes or something.
That was the only issue I ever heard was about the mailboxes here. It's, it's a group set of mailboxes.
Nothing should change with that arrangement.
Yeah.
Post office type group.
Yeah, and it, just the, that, that number five is just if somebody hits your mailbox with their car, we're not gonna replace it, essentially.
I mean, that's, that's protecting the town. They're plowing the road, and they inadvertently take your mailboxes out, we're saying we don't wanna be liable for it.
Well, we would be in that case.
Not even...
No? Not at all?
No.
All right.
We don't have a road up to town standard with the width and a shoulder where the mailboxes are sufficiently off of that, so.
It's, it's big enough that it's clearly...
Sounds like it's big enough that it's a big enough target to be missed by a plow.
Mailboxes are on the town road.
Oh, so then there's no problem, right?
If you're on the town part?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. We just put it in in general, but, so it's not a problem. If people don't have mailboxes, it's not a problem. They don't have sprinkler heads either, probably, if you're on one community well. So it's not something we have to worry about.
Okay, so we would need notarized signatures back by February first of all the members and non-members. We will send out copies of the agreement and a letter stating...
And a note that says, come to town hall, we'll notarize it for you. Or have it notarized by any...
Mr. Nois has been that route. It's difficult to get these people to come, especially during office hours and all. We've gone through this. They all have the five that have come in. I'll try to meet one of their meetings and go down with my notary stamp and do what I can.
But again, you know, make it clear that as, you know, February ninth, the probably will be suspending services.
Why don't we, can we, I know this is forward thinking, but how about around the first of January, if you haven't received many back, maybe we just put it on the agenda for a meeting and maybe then we can address going out and with your notary stamp and explaining anything we need to explain, going door-to-door, I mean, it's cold out, but make some cocoa and make people feel comfortable outside in this document so they can get their street plowed and we can turn around and they're driving.
We'll try, we'll try.
All right. And we can wear a suit outfit.
Okay. All right. Any questions, Mr. Nois?
Do you need a list of...
I guess I'll be getting the...
Tax assessment.
But if you have the addresses, sir, that'd be great. Great, thank you.
Do we need a motion on that?
Just to continue.
Continue it to the February ninth meeting?
I move that we continue this matter to the February ninth meeting.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor. Motion carries. Okay, we'll now go to D-2 appointments, and at this point, I will recuse myself.
Okay, D-2 Personnel Board to expire terms to October fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, and October fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. The applicants are Donna Cook, 192 Hilton Street, Janice Hughes, thirty-six Holly Lane, and Nancy Rodrick, nineteen Sparrow Drive. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Madam Vice President, just a point of kind of order here. At the last meeting, I was late arriving. I only came in, I believe, on the tail end of the second...
Yep.
Second person here. Should I be voting? Or, I mean, I went back, I reread everything there.
Would that be his decision?
I wasn't here for all of the testimony, though.
Well, this, first of all, this isn't a hearing where you have to...
I wasn't here for everyone.
Right, but I do think it's good to put it in there, and if you, it's up to you. If you have, in fact, gone over it, read their various materials, then if you feel comfortable voting, you absolutely can vote. If you don't, you can recuse yourself from it.
Great.
Or actually not recuse, abstain in this case.
Sure, that's kind of what I'm getting.
It's up to you.
No, I feel very comfortable. I read all of the application material, so, okay.
So the, the first motion would be the first appointment of ten fifteen, two thousand and fifteen. That would be the expiration date, because there's two different expirations.
Well, I, I make...
Usually, may I?
Usually the first?
Doesn't matter.
Well, I just wanna make sure that they put it in the motion.
I move that we appoint Janice E. Hughes to a term expiring ten fifteen, two thousand and fifteen to the Personnel Board, and Nancy Rodrick to, to the Personnel Board for a term expiring ten fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, just as they appear in order.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a concern. I know that Mrs. Rodrick said that she'd be living here, but will it be till two thousand and sixteen?
Yes. I'm still too young to reach out.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that she won't be like...
Yeah, I, she, she did refer to be married to an older man, and she still has to work.
Okay. I don't know if the, I didn't think the timeline was clear.
Okay. Motion's been made.
Yeah, I would, I would just say that, that the two names that I just moved are both veterans of human resources and I think have really a unique blend of skills that I think we could really benefit from on the Personnel Board at this current time. And it's, it's rare that we get such qualified folks for such specific positions, and I think it's, it behooves us to take, take those opportunities.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are those in favor? Against? Unanimous.
And thank all three applicants for their application. And now we're back to B-1.
Okay, we'll go back to public hearings and public presentations. Public hearing regarding proposed resolution for the renewal and the redesignation of enterprise zone to extend the program for five years and to remove census block four one seven dot O two, South Tiverton. Who's presenting?
Mr. Rodrick, nothing has changed since our original discussion on this matter. Several meetings back.
No, nothing has changed. For the record, since this is a public hearing, I'll just restate the issue once again. The state has designated parts of Portsmouth and parts of Tiverton to be estate enterprise zone where incentives are provided to businesses that create new jobs, so represent growth in their payroll from one year to the next. At the present time, because of changes that were made to this tax code in the state several years ago, only C corporations benefit from this, so S corporations and sole proprietorships do not. One of the key reasons to have an enterprise zone designation program was to target areas that have been distressed economically for a long period of time and do not demonstrate within themselves the resources or capacity to grow. And we're, as a former economic development director in the city of One Sackett, I can And as a former economic development director in the city of One Socket, I can tell you we certainly had neighborhoods that met that, long-term malays, buildings from the 1800s that cost millions of dollars to rehabilitate. My personal view is that's what the program was designed to do. It was not designed to support historic villages or artistic development like there is at Four Corners, or to disturb the tranquility or slow development pattern in rural areas. Thus, while I think the program fits North Tiverton and the center part of town very well, I do not believe it is appropriate to extend it to South Tiverton. It is neither in, I don't think it's consistent with the comprehensive plan to do that, and I don't think it's part of the statewide program to do that. Thus, when this came up for renewal, I asked for that one change to be made.
Okay. Anyone from the public? Second time, anyone from the public? Third and final time, anyone from the public? Okay. Public portion is now closed on that item. Council? Anything from the council?
Nothing has changed, so.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution for the renewal of the redesignation of the enterprise zone to extend the program for five years and to remove Census Block 417.02 South Tiverton.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Public hearing amendments to the Town Code, Chapter 38, Environment, Article 3, Earth Removal, Division 1, Generally, and Division 2, License, Continued for September 8th, 2014, Solicitor Memorandum on Town's Authority to Regulate Earth Removal Quarry Operations, Planning Board Memorandum, and Draft Less Legislation. Mr. Tights?
Mr. President, the memorandum was provided previously as far as the concerns that were had with the ordinance. You've also got the Planning Board, they had some concerns, and they also, also thought that there should be changes to the enabling legislation. So essentially, we've jumped to that, which is B2C, which is a draft, and I point out it's the first draft that has not been reviewed by the Planning Board yet, but we have time before the General Assembly convenes. But this is a draft of proposed amendments to the Enabling Act. Tiverton's Enabling Act dating from 40 years ago is outdated and needs to be revised, and so we made changes which would principally include rock and granite in this, so we wouldn't have that trouble, and then bring it up to modern standards, including concerns with groundwater protection in particular. There was a fair amount of specific language in the earlier ordinance, which I've not put in here because this is enabling legislation, and I don't think it has, should have real specific sections citing to specific DEM standards that might change over time in enabling legislation. Hopefully, this will, this will work better over the next four years than the previous one has lasted until now. So if you're so inclined, I would suggest referring this to the Planning Board for their comment and recommendations.
Well, this is still a public hearing portion, so I will request and ask if there's anyone from the public.
Yeah, sorry. Well, I do point out, it's no longer an ordinance. There isn't, I'm not presenting the ordinance before you at this time, but...
Anyone from the public?
My name's Bob Toolen, Forte Linda Road, Tiverton, a neighbor to one of our quarries, which I've shown a lot of concern. I'm interested in, I haven't seen what you've drafted or how it's going to be presented. All I know is we now have a 100-foot hole over there. Don't have any idea where it's going or what the town's doing. We have another quarry in town that if you take Route 24 and the wind is proper, Route 24 turns brown, and you need windshield wipers to get through. And I think it's called LAL. I'm not quite positive of that, so I'm not here just to pick on one. But received information that you hired a hydrologist to study these quarries and to see what's going on with possible damage to our drinking water. I have not seen a report on that. And before you pass any legislation, I suggest that we have all the reports in hand to find out if we are endangering Stafford Pond, if we are endangering Algonquin Gas Line, which I stressed quite a while back, because it neighbors that place. And I've seen pictures, what happens when it blows and it's a human blowtorch, and I told you before, it leveled two farms a half mile away. My concern is a catastrophe to the town of Tiverton, drinking water disappears, or our middle school with 400 kids disappears. My two concerns. My house is falling down. I've been fighting this thing since 97, and all I can see in the future is Tiverton Materials going bankrupt and walking away with a 200-foot hole full of water. I would suggest that if we issue a license, that we ask for a $2 million bond to be held by the town of Tiverton, so that they can't claim bankruptcy and walk away and leave as a hole with contaminated water. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Thanks, Jim. Anyone else from the public? Third and final time, anyone else from the public?
Mr. President, members of the council, Lawrence McCarthy from Tiverton Materials, I just want to, basically, a point of clarification. Is the proposed ordinance as of, still on the table, or is it, we just talking about draft legislation now?
The proposed ordinance is not still on the table.
No, we're talking draft legislation.
Okay. So I, so basically, the, there's not going to be a vote on the proposed ordinance as amended?
That's correct.
Not at this time.
Not tonight.
Thank you.
Not, not without a further re-advertising and public hearing.
Thank you.
Again, anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Third and final time, anyone from the public? Seeing none, we will refer this to the Planning Board?
Mr. President, is it possible just to ask questions about the draft, or...
And it's possible.
Is the intent to get Planning Board input first? I just have a couple of quick questions, you know, just...
It's your pleasure. I'm here as long as you want me to, so.
So, Section 4, Paragraph 1, is there, what's the rationale for doing business or having operations running on Saturdays? As opposed to maintaining a five-day work week and giving residents who live nearby some iota of a reprieve on the weekends?
That I don't know. That was one of the things that was in the original ordinance, which I decided not to, not to change at this point. I didn't, I was concerned about a claim that would lead to a taking, a temporary taking, that we're prohibiting them from working on certain days. We don't generally restrict anybody else, any other kind of businesses, to only five days of operation. So since it had been in there at the six days back in 1973, when we had Sunday Blue laws, I left it this way.
Sure. I would advocate that this particular type of business creates a situation and a circumstance that might warrant a reconsideration of that approach.
And am I reading this right, that on Sunday, the restrictions as written here are less strict, so that you could go half an hour earlier and an hour later?
No, but only with, only with a special exception from the town council.
So no work, no earth removal on Sundays?
Sunday, without the special exception, yes.
And my second question is with regard...
You could change the hours.
Sorry, my second kind of question or comment is with regards to Section 5, Paragraph A, sentence, triple I, that dictates that a plan prepared by a registered professional engineer, landscape architect, and/or professional surveyor in compliance with the provisions of said ordinance setting forth needs to include certain things, and triple I is distance to groundwater, and the type of ground cover to be planted or applied upon completion of earth removal operations, so on and so forth here. So my, my concern here is, is twofold, is whether a land, and I'm, I don't, I'm not an expert here, but whether anyone aside from a professional engineer and perhaps a professional surveyor might be able to accurately calculate distance to groundwater, kind of given the sensitivity here regarding Stafford Pond. So that's the first kind of comment. And then the second here is, I don't know to what extent it should be part of the enabling legislation, or whether it ends up being part of a revised town ordinance that eventually makes its way back here, but I do believe that any discussion of groundwater distances to or whatsoever needs to be better informed by some science. So I don't, I don't have a specific recommendation here, aside from the fact that I don't think we can take a one-size-fits-all approach to groundwater, or distance to groundwater measurement and/or potential impacts on groundwater, and that should be on a case-by-case basis.
Well, I think it's a good idea that the groundwater should be calculated by somebody more qualified, whether it be a geo-hydrologist or hydraulic engineer, whatever the title is, and I'll find that out. I think, as to the second part, I think we're just trying to get the information here at this point. And yes, when, when considering it, I think it does make a difference where you are, what the groundwater is, how close to a drinking water supply and so forth. So my, so that's why I wouldn't put any specific number of what it would be in here.
Makes sense.
I just have a quick question. On B2B memorandum from our acting town planner to the council, last paragraph, this starts with Mr. Hardy opined, and roughly the next sentence is the substituting council to the board at that time, David Petracca, was asked, has office not been consulted by you with regards to the memorandum or the amendments of the draft ordinance? Why was that when it went before the town planning board?
Why was it before the town planning board, or...
Well, why was the, the council for the planning board not communicated the changes of the amendment or the, or the draft before that?
Did Mr. Petracca did? Mr. Rogiro wasn't at the meeting. I have been in touch with Mr. Rogiro for a while.
Says that his office was not consulted.
I understand that's what it says. But I have been in contact with Mr. Rogiro on this whole issue of the LAL site ready, as was mentioned, and the groundwater. I have been in contact with him on this.
This is a tangential question, but where are we in any licensing or requirements for surety, or looking at holes, or any of the other avenues that we've been talking about for the last year or so? Anywhere? And that question is to anyone who is, has the information to answer.
I think we're proceeding to it. I think we'll, and the clerk and I will need to confirm about the renewal of the licenses and how it, with that. Essentially, we have the authority to license, but what we're licensing is limited. So we'll be looking at that more closely as we go through the license renewals. And hopefully, we'll be able to get this adopted by the General Assembly early in the session, since it's just, has another reason. I mean, one thought would be make a change to the general laws and change it statewide. But I think that will open up a can of worms, and that will certainly slow it down. I'd rather have this, Tiverton already has specific enabling legislation, let's just deal with Tiverton, and hopefully, we can get that passed early in the session, January, early February, and then we can revisit the ordinance from there.
Have we been in consultation with, consultations? Have we been in conversations with anybody at the state, our delegates?
Not, not yet, because we, no, because we don't have anything to give them. If you, that's for you to decide tonight. If you decide that you, this is the route you want to take, we'll certainly wait till after, wait till after Tuesday to see who they are, although I don't think there's going to be a change, some of them running unopposed. But we will contact them and give them a heads up.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I do want to presume on the council's decision.
I'll make a motion that we... Sorry. I'll make a motion that we forward the draft legislation as presented in Item B2C to the Planning Board for opinion.
Second.
May I?
We have a motion.
Wait, for, what did you say, for what?
To the Planning Board for opinion.
Oh, for opinion.
Yes. Could we just say, instead of the draft legislation as presented, as presented and amended by your own suggestions?
Yes.
Just to soon give them the...
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I did, yeah. While we're talking about it on page 3, halfway down the last sentence of that large paragraph, enough of said ground cover to be held in reserve and reapplied for a minimum thickness of 3 parent 15 inches, so that 3 needs to be changed to 15, spelled out?
Yeah.
Just something I noticed.
Any other changes? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Town council sitting as a board of licensing, non-advertised license. DeArecoral Construction Incorporated, 280 Plainfield Pike, Cranston, Rhode Island, requests approval of street excavator's license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Mr. Bulking?
Yes, thank you. This is the contractor that's doing the Fish Road Water Project for the North Tiverton Fire District. Because part of that project includes doing about 700 feet of line on Kenyon and doing some more water work on Doris, they're required to come before the town and apply and hopefully get a license to be a street excavator. And the current work is being inspected and being controlled by North Tiverton Fire District right now. It's on a state road, so the town and the DPW aren't directly involved whatsoever, but we will be doing all the inspection and of materials and construction when they come to the town road. So this particular case, we have liability insurance with the town named, meeting the limits that had to be met, and the performance bond is the only issue, performance and payment bond. The company does have 100% performance and payment bond for the project, but it's with North Tiverton Fire District. I'm recommending that we, we use that bond also for the town. It's not made out to the town, but it's guaranteeing all the work. I have a copy of both bonds at the DPW now, or else we have to make the contractor go rebond the same work that he'd be, that's already included in his bond for the town work. So it'd be a duplicate requirement on the contractor. I think the contract is, the work is protected under the performance bond and payment bond that he does have now, and that we wouldn't, we wouldn't be hanging out there at all as far as getting the work complete. So with all of that, recommending that DeArecoral... So with all of that, recommending that De Aircoole Construction be recognized as a licensed street excavator.
Steve, let me ask you one quick question. So the requirements for a street excavator's license is only when you dig up a town road?
Yes.
Okay, so state roads, they don't need a license for?
No, they get a special, they get a permit from the state for that, yep.
Anything else from the council?
I have one left question. I am sorry to ask you this all the time when these come up. What was the contractor again, did leaps road for you guys?
What was the what?
This wasn't the contractor did leaps road, water mains there?
No, no, no. Nope. This is the, this is the first time I've seen this contractor working, working in town.
I'm going to swing for him to come up.
Well, I would, if there is no, no other discussion, I would move that we approve of a street excavator's license to Der Cole or Der Coley, Construction Inc. of Plainfield Pike in Cranston, subject to meeting all legal requirements, which includes assuming the bond for the North Tiverton Fire District.
Second.
No. Not assuming, it's recognizing the bond.
It's recognized, yeah.
Not assuming their bond.
Well, recognizing it does us little, is of little value to us, because we recognize it doesn't mean that they will.
Yeah, we can't assume their bond.
Well, then it's a worthless bond.
We don't assume anyone's bond.
When someone does work for a street of ours, they have to be, the job has to be bonded, and the town is a recipient or is a beneficiary in the event that the job goes south.
Right, but we're not assuming their bond.
Well, then the bond is worthless to the town of Tiverton. It's only valuable to North Tiverton Fire, and they have no obligation to repair our streets in the event of.
Well, they're permitted. The work on our streets will also be permitted by the DPW, so we have control. What I'm asking is, I think it would be fair and equitable to waive the bond requirement by the town because the project is already bonded, a hundred percent bonded to be completed by performance and by payment. It isn't, you're right, you're a hundred percent right, it is not a bond made out to the town, but the project is bonded and it's backed by the North Tiverton Fire District, which I have faith in. They have the money and they have the backing to complete the project. So I guess that's, but you're a hundred percent right, the bond isn't a hundred percent protecting the town. We can't call the bond if the project isn't.
It's zero percent protecting the town, is my point. It's a hundred percent protecting the North Tiverton Fire District, but it's zero percent protecting the town of Tiverton. So the bond to us is.
And what's, I mean, what's the administrative hurdle here for them if they were to go out and get a second bond?
That's correct. It'd be going out and get a bond and bonding the same work a second time and paying for that. We surely can require it, but that was.
Could we be co-bonders or whatever?
Beg your pardon?
Could we be co-bonders?
Can't they, can't they name the town as an additional insured under the bond?
Well, we did that under the liability insurance. I'll ask them about that aspect. I'm not.
I mean, it shouldn't cost them anymore because it would, the work that they're doing is the same work, you know? So whether they lay the pipes and we take the assumption of the cost of putting the roads back together. I mean.
I feel as though we should be better protected, to Brett's point.
Or protected at all.
Sure.
All right, so I will amend my motion to say I move that we approve the street excavator's license for, I don't know how to pronounce this.
Der Coley.
Der Coley Construction Inc. of Cranston, subject to meeting all legal requirements, one of which is that we can, that the applicant can get the town of Tiverton to be a named beneficiary in the bond, the hundred percent performance guarantee bond. And if they can't, we're going to have to talk about it again.
Second.
I have one question for Randy. Andy, if the North Tiverton Fire District is bonded, and there's any damage that would accrue to the town, we would have a claim over against the North District Fire, the North Tiverton Fire District, which would then bring in the bond into play, and they would have to respond to any claim we have under the bond issued under their name.
We would have a claim against the North Tiverton Fire District, whether they could bring the bond or not. I mean, that would be their issue.
That's what they're bonded for.
Right. But if there's any issue with it, we would essentially be suing their ratepayers. We'd be suing our citizens who are ratepayers to the North Tiverton District if.
That's a whole other issue. I mean, we're assuming that the North Tiverton Fire District is covered by the bond.
That's correct.
If we have any claim over against the North Tiverton Fire District, it brings into play the bond, so effectively, we're covered under the bond indirectly.
Indirectly, and we'd have to assume. I think that's the question before you in the motion, whether you want to assume that we are effectively covered by North Tiverton's bond or not.
No, I think it's just as easy to request that they either add us to the bond or have a separate bond for the town of Tiverton. Again, I don't think it's going to be a big deal. It's just a matter of changing some warrants on the bond. So we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
We're not digging up any town roads.
What?
Fish Road is favorable.
This project will be digging up two town roads.
Yeah.
But not immediately.
Hmm?
But not immediately.
No. Not, no, we're not holding them up at this minute.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
And Steve, you'll come back and let us know. Appointments and resignations. Resignations, Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission, Christopher Clarendon. Mr. Clarendon has sent a letter of resignation. We accept it with deep regret and ask that the town clerk send him a letter of appreciation from the town council. Excuse me.
And inform people that there is a vacancy on the Harbor and Coastal Waters Management. Oh, wonderful.
We still need a motion to accept his resignation.
I move that we accept Chris Clarendon's resignation from the Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission and thank him for his years of service and continued interest in water resources in the town of Tiverton.
Second. We have a motion second. All those in favor? Oh, thank you. Okay, unfinished business, financial business, new business. Chief Blakely requests permission to advertise for full-time and per diem police and fire dispatchers. Mr. Blakely is not here, Mr. Town Administrator.
Mr. President, there exists a vacancy in the full-time CCO position, CCO being the communication officer. The chief is also seeking authority to go out and form a list of what he's calling in his request per diem, what in the contract was referred to as a casual CCO position, which has no benefit rights, and is at the beck and call of the chair of the chief to fill in overtime positions, overtime shifts that become available when there's no other recourse for the town. Since we have a vacancy and we know we have ongoing staffing issues with this position, and we're putting pretty significant demands on the animal control officer and the records clerk in interim, I would recommend your favorable disposition of this resolution.
Okay, any questions from the council? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I would move that we grant permission to advertise for the positions of full-time and per diem or casual emergency dispatchers. Can I make a note? Is that how you spell per diem?
Per diem, yep. We have a motion second. All those in favor?
No, I don't think so.
Motion carries. It was unanimous.
Just make sure it's spelled right.
Yeah.
Well, per diem? Yeah, I think it's spelled wrong.
I said.
Yeah, it's wrong. It's E I.
There's also no apostrophe.
No, it's I E, there's just no apostrophe.
Just no apostrophe.
Oh, the apostrophe is.
Yeah, I didn't notice that.
Okay.
Four years of Latin, I remember how to spell diem.
Carpe diem. Town Administrator, items and announcements. Update on community center disposition.
Mr. President, members of the council, I know that this has been a matter of some interest. I've put a memo in your packet this evening that tells you where I am in the decision-making process with respect to the community center at 346 Judson Street. I think it goes without saying that no attempt will be made to save the building for any good purpose. The Financial Town Referendum instructed that the building be disposed of in quote-unquote "the best interest of the town." After having the property appraised, both in its as-is standing condition and what the appraiser, in his professional judgment, believes we could get for the lot if the building were demolished and leveled, it would appear that the economics are fairly compelling to make an attempt to sell it in the as-is condition. No matter what we do, even if we do the demolition in-house, we would have to hire out for the environmental review and then sustain the cost of both the opportunity cost of having DPW workers on site and the actual cash cost of filled loom seed, temporary fencing. We simply would, we would end up taking a loss, or very nearly taking a loss. That being the case, I'd rather just try to sell it at auction and use the appraiser's value as the minimum bid price and see if we can get a taker. I have, one of the very first steps I took was to solicit all of the abutters to the property. I've had three abutters express an interest. One of them is very seriously interested in the property. I'd like to see what he'll come up with at auction, but it's the cleanest and fastest way for us to dispose of the building. As I've been quoted in the media, I would prefer not to burn a single drop of oil or spend a dime keeping this building going no longer. Its biggest attraction is that it does not have parking on site, so it's logical that an abutter may have the greatest interest in improving the property and keeping it. So that's what I'd like to do, and I'll be seeking the council's permission at the appropriate time. And I had questions the other day, looking at the clerk and the solicitor. I don't think we can do that tonight because we didn't advertise it as such.
This is informational only.
This is informational only, and I would entertain any questions you have about the process we used here. I tried to certainly document every single milestone we could possibly fix.
The only question I have is that should we do it at an auction with a minimum bid, would part of the requirement be that they do have to demolish the building within a reasonable amount of time? Because I'd hate to see somebody buy it and have it sit there for another however long and be a fire hazard or whatnot, even though it is no longer town property. Should something happen, we would have to respond.
I think we could do that. We did that for Old Ranger School, and I think we, I understand the possibility might be that someone would rehabilitate it. I think we could do it either way, that they'd either have to demolish it or rehabilitate it sufficient to receive a sufficient certificate of occupancy within such and such a period of time. We could craft that, certainly.
I even wouldn't be terribly opposed to offering a stabilization, as long as the building isn't, is maintained sufficiently so that it doesn't fall down and things don't fall off it and people don't fall in it. You know, there are certainly, it opens up an additional pool of investors who would buy and hold and stabilize it and then maybe redevelop it in a year, two, three, whatever it is. I mean, it is, even if it's fixed to a reasonable level, even if it's not got a C of O for residential use, commercial use, or whatever, you know, it's still better than it is now.
How big is a lot?
It's a double lot for that part of town.
It's probably 10,000 square feet.
How much?
Probably 10,000 square feet, quarter of an acre, maybe.
About quarter of an acre, a little bit more.
Maybe 15,000 square feet. Building's probably four or 5,000 square.
It's, that I, for some strange reason, remember, it's 3,600 square feet.
The only thing that worries me about even a stabilization, again, a property sitting that long in that area, to me, just screams fire hazard, and I would want to see something legitimate done, one way or the other, within a fixed period of time. And that's only my opinion, and after November 4th, it doesn't matter.
I definitely agree, but I'm also sensitive to the fact that, or sensitive to the hypocrisy of our own letting the building deteriorate and then telling the future owners, now you can't do that. But so I'm sensitive to, either any of those three situations, I think, are better than continuing to let it linger as it is now.
I support your proposed approach. I think it makes the best sense.
I think you can get a heck of a lot more than $3,000 for salvage. No?
You could.
Don't, I'm not showing you my cards, Councilman. At the appropriate time, I have to disclose everything to you before we do anything.
Has all the committees that meet at that location, have they been moved to other locations?
They've been advised on more than one occasion, they need to begin meeting here at town hall or at the senior center according to their convenience. Most of them have made that change. The one enduring issue is moving the Harbor Masters operation here.
Lock the building. That'll determine it very quickly.
Yeah. We have some document retention issues, just to make sure we keep what we're supposed to keep from the Harbor Master. There's a lot of records. My intention at the present time is to put him on the computer downstairs in the planning office that the chairman of the planning board uses only infrequently, and then make storage space available. Move the phone line over here. It is a busy office in March when moorings are being renewed, so we want to continue customer service at a high level, but he doesn't need to be there to do that.
And he can turn off the heat?
It's pretty much turned off already. We're maintaining only the bare minimum to prevent the pipes freezing. All of the internet and telephone has been turned off, except for the Harbor Masters account. Everything else has been turned off.
Preliminary discussion on Town Administrator's proposed budget process.
Well, the first thing I'd like to say, Mr. President, is that I'm only talking about my process, my internal process, working with the administrative staff of the town to come up with a budget that will, has always and will always be presented in the same format that has been previous years, unless and until the town treasurer and the budget committee and the council decide they want to change that format. It's not my call. What I am signaling to the public and to my department heads is that there's a way to think about budgets, which is to start from ground zero and build your way up, knowing which expenses you cannot avoid having to pay, and then focusing the budget debate on those discretionary items that are competing for scarce resources. That is, in my opinion, the most responsible way to do a budget. So I think it's very intelligent and certainly admirable, the tremendous amount of effort that so many people in this town put forth in going through the budget line by line. It makes sense. It's a fair and intelligent process to follow. But hear me out. If you do a budget with a personnel supplement, the type that's done by the state government and which the director of revenue insists upon whenever they have to come in and take over a city or town, you start with your collective bargaining agreements. Actually, first of all, you start off with your bondholders. They will get paid first. So you have to understand that you start with, that baseline is, you pay your bondholders, and your other contractual obligations must be satisfied because you cannot defend yourself in court if you were to default on them. And then from there, you get into areas where you may have some control but not a lot. And so in my memo to you, I brought some of those issues to the forefront. We don't name our price. We don't name our price for electricity. We try to get the best deal we can. We join a buying group. We buy large blocks of electricity for multiple years and that is the best available rate. Timing is everything. So, you know, this year, the school department's contract will outlive the town's by one year. It's going to make a big difference in their budget versus ours because they're locked in at a price that was locked in three years ago. But when they come back to the market in the future years, they will also see the same increase that we saw this year. The same thing goes for, we were able to get on a heating fuel bid and save money for the town, again, working with the school department. So, once we lock in our price, the best we can do is manage our usage. So that's something that we, as an internal management team, can present. How many kilowatt hours are we going to use, how many gallons? But once the price has been set, we can't change it. So that becomes part of your knowledge about how you're building up your budget. The personnel supplement, if I can just jump back for a second, should also make very explicit to the people of the town what you're paying for. One of the things that impresses me as I'm building this document up, the level of qualifications that your department heads and many, many of your employees have. It's what you're paying for, and it gets lost in a budget debate when it goes line by line and we just kind of skip over that personnel line because it looks like a big box, we don't want to open the cover and look inside. But when you think about police officers who not only have to qualify on their weapons, many of them have masters or bachelorette degrees in criminal justice or in law enforcement, you add NFPA requirements for firefighters, their EMT certifications, it's important. And then, of course, we'll have to add our National Incident Management System certifications to be qualified for emergency response. It adds up to an awful lot of qualifications that are being made available to the people of the town in Tiverton. So if you want to understand what you're paying for, you get what you pay for. The personnel supplement should elucidate what the training levels are. And in some cases where we lag, it should set targets for us, and there should be a budget item for training to bring us up to speed. So what we'll get in the end is a very small pot of money and some very large things, capital expenses that we want to do, major operational improvements that maybe cannot be capitalized but we know that we need in our different departments. And that is the crux of a true, honest-to-goodness budget debate in this environment where nobody in this room did it but past leaders of our cities and towns and of our state made a number of contractual concessions that now are paying for through OPEB and other pension obligations. All of these things are demands on the assets of the town, and it also brings into very sharp focus the role of and the necessity of a general fund balance that's strong enough to sustain the town through unexpected times. So all of that is how I intend to propose to proceed with my budget. It's how I will present my budget in that fashion, in terms of how I would put together a PowerPoint slide presentation. But the document won't look any different. The numbers will be different, but the account numbers, the format of the presentation, the manner in which we proceed to give that to the budget committee for its deliberation, and this council for its deliberation won't change unless those bodies decide they want to look at things differently. But I thought I'd put everybody on notice how I think about the budget.
An update on land use procedures enforcement ad hoc committee?
These last two items will be brief. Mr. President, I intend to convene the land use procedures and enforcement ad hoc committee to go over a list of initiatives that were established some time ago, mostly at the initiative of the public. And what I understand was a process that was designed to depersonalize some of the issues and get to the crux of your regulatory frameworks. Our new zoning official has devoted quite a bit of time already to looking at some of the areas where our enforcement has been weak in the past and coming up with an action plan to address some of those things. In some cases, has been issuing notices of violation to some longstanding violators. And so I think we're going to make significant progress against this task once we get rolling. So the email has gone out and we are settling on a date that looks like it's going to be the third week of November, but I'm going to, obviously, this is a public body, so it'll all be publicized in timely fashion.
Is that committee fully staffed?
Yeah, with the appointment of the zoning officer, we now have all the people that we need at the table.
This might be a stupid statement, but I'm on that committee, aren't I?
Yes, sir, you are.
Because I replied to the email, assuming that I was, but I couldn't remember, so...
I think I remember your appointment because it was the same night that I got appointed.
Maybe I was in the bathroom.
No.
You were appointed.
I think we just said Brett will do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Brief report on League of Cities and Towns Legislative Committee.
Very brief. The League of Cities and Towns has an ad hoc legislative committee, which I joined. It has met twice, it will meet one more time, to discuss the initiatives of the municipalities before the General Assembly. So I invite your feedback on areas where you think the state could be more helpful. I would certainly like to hear those thoughts because the group itself has its own program that it is considering coming up with. I don't think I'm speaking out of school. I didn't want to do this in writing, but I don't think I'm speaking out of school. But one of the really critical issues that we think we want to try to attack this year is the school housing program needs to be unlocked, so to speak. And we need to get back on track as a state and bringing the state, if it can't support its entire program, at least part of its commitment to help the cities and towns build school buildings. So other things, if you want to bring them to our attention, please do so. We'll meet again this Wednesday, and it'll probably be the last time we meet.
Thank you. Council, announcements, comments, and questions?
Mr. President, I have a brief announcement, and it's good news. Some of you may recall that a couple of months ago, Mr. Gil Fletcher of Pores Watch joined us outlining a proposal for a program for feral or neighborhood cats. And it was essentially a program for trap, murder, and release cats. We did, as a member of the town council, we did pass a resolution approving the proposal. Happy to report that we've now received a grant, or more specifically, Pores Watch, on behalf of Tiverton and their program in Tiverton, has received a grant from PetSmart Charities, the charitable arm of PetSmart. And the grant is in the total amount of $50,400 and will be paid over a period of two years to sponsor a program that hopefully will become a model program for the estate of Rhode Island. So thanks to Barbara Pelletier of Placing Pores, Mr. Fletcher, and the best of luck to Mr. Fletcher and to PetSmart Charities.
Could I add just one thing? Since we think of that, this is just for spay and neuter operations, and since Placing Pores has to pick up the supply of cat litter, food, all these things, you know, be...
Fixed.
Yes, fixed. I am sure I will be happy to go out and beg for more money because it's a huge change and it's a huge expense on the other end. So if you know somebody who would be lovingly giving us money to Placing Pores for the supplies, please get the message out.
Barbara, give us an estimate as to what the number is, and we'll start looking around. We need the number.
Get the check ready, Jay.
Yeah, we need the number.
Depends on how many cats you catch.
Our budget, it works around 20,000, and we do probably about 200 cats, so extrapolate the whole thing. And I think we're going to have to cut down on maybe the intensity of quality because of the volume, but it's still an expense. I'll let you know further numbers as I get the bills.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, the Tiverton Senior Center's knitting and quilting volunteers are holding their annual handcraft sale this weekend at the Secconic Bay Manor, 1215 Main Road, Tiverton. That's on Saturday, November 1st, and Sunday, November 2nd, from 9:00 to 3:00. And last year's sales contributed to three scholarships of 2,000 each for three-star kits. So they do, it does make a difference. Please join the knitters and quilters and buy a lot of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'll quickly say, this may be the last thing for two of us for sure, and for some of us, others maybe. I want to thank everyone I served with on the council for two years. We learned, I learned a lot, honestly, about our own government and things that I didn't know before I started. It's been an interesting ride, and we'll see what happens from here on out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodrick?
Yes?
Thank you. As the liaison to the town council from the school committee, I'd just like to thank Mr. Rodrick and Mr. Gerlach for their service and their thoughtfulness, and especially for their long hours on the budget. We really appreciate it. I can only say for you two, because you're not running, if I say anything else, I'll have a 12-18 against you.
Sit down.
Thank you, Mrs. Black.
Anything else from the council? Hey, town solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item, K1, is Daniel Church Estates. Mr. Cabral, representing them apparently, well, not representing them as attorney, but representing them as a homeowner, could not be here tonight. You have a memo from Kate Michaud talking about her inspection and site visit, and it seems that they are making very significant progress in cleaning up the dam. They have problems with the two homeowners on Main Road that aren't part of their association and apparently have refused access, and I gather VEM is considering what action to take with regard to them. So at this point, seeing that they have been taking considerable action, making considerable progress, and given the fact that you're going to be, have a new council coming in in November and December with the holidays to allow time to get this, I would recommend continuing it to February 9th, 2015.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion to continue this item to February 9th, 2015.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Viking Stone.
As you can see from the materials that you have in front of you, apparently the operator of Viking Stone obtained a blasting, well, he contracted with some, well, he allegedly contracted with someone to obtain a blasting permit. That person obtained, this Construction Drilling Services Corp., obtained a blasting permit from the state fire marshal's office. Then another company, Sesmic Solutions, which was contracted to do pre-blasting investigations, sent out letters to the neighbors, which is how it came to our attention. And then you also have a memo from the zoning official about his history of it. And then K3D is actually an older memo from me from February 7th, 2013, but it kind of sets forth the history of what, the recent history of Viking Stone. In a nutshell, the use was shut down by the town when they were repeatedly flooding Fish Road with the overflow. There was a question of whether the use had been abandoned and they had any legal right to continue, and after meeting with them and investigating and research, I actually did conclude that they had not abandoned the legal non-conforming use. But there also were several things that they would be required to do, as set forth on the last page, their next steps. These are the things that they were going to be required to do to come in for their license if they wanted to operate again. And none of those things have been done. Include, although we have had subsequent meetings with them, and it's always a complaint about they can't afford the plans.
Why are they blasting but they don't have plans?
Well, that's a good question. They're not. I did communicate with the state fire marshal's office. Mr. Robert Maury is the explosives and flammable liquids tech who's in charge of giving the blasting permits. So this packet, your clerk has thoughtfully made copies of the entire packet, which also includes the blasting permit and my memo, which I sent to him, as well as the cover memo. But after talking to him last week, and I sent this to him on Friday, setting forth our objection to the blasting, and I'm pleased to report that I spoke with him on the phone today and confirmed that the blasting permit is going to be rescinded.
Mrs. Maury?
Yes, I spoke to Mr. Maury, and he said the state fire marshal is rescinding the blasting permit. And apparently, to your question about how can he afford it, apparently I don't think he has yet paid the blasting company either. So it's not clear that they were about to do it. It turns out in retrospect that they weren't about to do it immediately.
Do we know what the extent of the plan was?
No. We don't know that, and that's what I'm trying to find out. I expect to meet with, well, two things. One is, we also prepared an action in court, which I would have discussed with you in executive session, to go forward for an injunction in court if we needed it, and we'll still have that. But I'm going to meet with Mr. Maury. I'm hoping we can talk to Mr. Maury about our other blasting problems in town and see where we can, we can get some resolution on those, or at least some understanding, greater understanding going forward.
Viking was the one with, the one with the active permit, right?
No.
No, they, that was Coelho. That was Coelho.
Vikings permit was revoked in 2007, and we have heard that they apparently are occasionally doing some grinding, not grinding, it was crushing, crushing. They bring in truckloads of stuff, crush it and bring it out, but we've yet to establish any particular violation at the moment. And this was the first we'd heard of the blasting. So if they're going to be blasting, they're really going to be in trouble because they're not going to be doing it with an approved permit from the state fire marshal. So that will be a felony.
And that's a huge hole in the ground already that we can't afford to make any bigger. And neither can they.
Hey, seaside guests.
Providing, this is just a follow-up, kind of housecleaning. The closing on this was back in February. K4B is actually the purchase and sale agreement, which was signed over a year ago, but by its terms was to be confidential until the transaction was completed, but to make it public what the terms were.